Good afternoon, Chair Antiveros. This is Jess with Community Development Staff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. McNeely, I can. How about you? Can you hear me?
Hear you great. Staff should be ready to kick this off here in about two minutes.
Okay, sounds good. I'm ready on my end.
Right, I'm gonna get the agenda shared here.
Okay. I'm just doing my roll call list now.
Got it.
All right, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveros. My clock is showing four o'clock. So would you please start our study session?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Antiveros, and welcome Planning and Zoning Commissioners and any members of the public who are with us. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission's Study Session for today, February 28. Chair Antiveros, I would point out that I'm seeing, I'm seeing we do have a quorum. However, there's still two commissioners that I don't see have joined us. But we did anticipate all of them participating, or we got an RSVP from all of them participating.
Okay, and because we don't have to be, or excuse me, because we don't have to have a quorum, let's go ahead and start the study session on time.
Absolutely, will do. Before we jump into the study session, Madam Chair, I would point out that we have Angela Lane with us, in addition to all the community development staff that you're familiar with, and Angela is with the County Attorney's Office and will be working with us.
Okay, is she our counsel now?
She will be, yes, she will be our counsel for today's, for today's hearing, and we would anticipate, of course, Heather Moser, the Deputy County Attorney, also assists quite a bit on planning and zoning matters, particularly ones that go to the board. But yes, we, we have Angela working with us as our counsel.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely, and Ms. Lane, this is Chair Antiveros, and I would just like to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for assisting us.
No problem, I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. All right, Mr. McNeely, go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So first on your agenda, we will go through the items that we anticipate being on your public hearing agenda next month on Wednesday, March 27. Staff will give a quick overview and orientation to the case, and of course, we'll avoid discussing any merits of the case or whether or not any findings can be made. And certainly, this is a great time for the commissioners to ask questions on any of these cases. The first one, CUP 2340, is conditional use permit for a metal storage container. It is in valley. Bob is managing this case. I see he's already shared a screen. So Bob, if you can go ahead and give a brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Can everyone hear me?
Very great.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the Commissioner. This case is the work metal storage container, CUP 2340.
Hey Bob, we lost your screen.
Okay, is it back?
Yep, it's back.
There we go. Okay. All right, in this case, the applicant is, the applicant and the property owners are Christopher Eric, Erica Horton and Jennifer Williams, actually, with Bobby. This only is AR1, that's agricultural residential winning parcel size zone in the purpose size to over one acre. And the request is for a conditional use permit for a permanent 40 by eight metal storage container. And some of the commissioners won't know this, some will. In Coquettino County, if you are permitted one 20 by eight storage container by right, you do have to get a permit from a community development. That is a free permit, meet certain standards, but you can get a 20 by eight by right. If you go more than that, that means if you get more than one 20 by eight or a larger one like this one of 40 by eight or any number of needing this larger, greater number, bigger than that, you are required to get a conditional use permit. So this is a vicinity map showing the subject parcel. It is as you're going into the valley area. This is not always easy to see, but this is a huge area with old subdivisions. So as you're coming into the subdivision area, that's right there on the right. And this, yes, ma'am?
If I can interrupt you, it looks like Commissioner Ruggles and Commissioner Wilson are having issues hearing you.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Kelly. I was gonna say, Bob, you might want to get a little closer to your microphone or something.
Okay. Sorry about that. Give me one second, make sure my settings are correct. Just had to set up again. Is that any better? Nope.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't much noticeably better, but go ahead. See, see if you, see if it's a little improved now.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Hear you, but still not great, yeah.
How about now?
That is much better. There you go.
Wow. That's my technical issues today with everything. All right. Okay, so this is the subject property. You can see Harvey 180 and Simmons Lane over here. This, that's where the property is located. The, there's already a cabin on there. The storage container would be over here in this gravel area, and I'll show you a site plan. In a second. There we go. I'm not sure what's taking so long to advance. Okay, so this is the site plan. You can see the 40-foot storage container here again, as I said, a gravel driveway, and this is an existing cabin on the site. There we go. And this is a picture of the container as it's already painted. I believe it, it is already on the site, but it is, it's painted a nice tan color, which should blend with the valley, the valley area kind of landscape out there. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious, if we grant rights for a 20, I suspect I know a reason why the 40 isn't, but is, is it just purely the size or is there something else beyond that that has this requiring special permission?
They, it is the size and the, the, the impacts of a larger container. If it's smaller, it's considered to not be as impactful. And my understanding of the history, I'm not really great on the history of this, but it, at one point, these, these things, these containers started to proliferate in the county, and as it became more common and people started buying them, they're also really good for, they will lock up really well, apparently. So a lot of people want to get them in these rural areas for security. But basically, that's it. It's a, it's a little bit smaller. It's not quite, it's not as visible. It's actually half as long. So it's, it's quite a bit smaller. And if you do a permit through the county, through planning and zoning for a smaller one, you, you are required to have a certain color and have a site plan and meet certain requirements as well.
Does it have anything to do with the fact that, you know, the square footage of the 40 exceeds the 200 square foot threshold that typically is permitted?
I don't, I'm not aware of that. That, that could have been a part of the reason for it, certainly.
Thank you.
But, but I will say they, they don't require any kind of building permit for any installation at all, so.
Unless you're gonna hook up utilities. So as long as there's no, yeah, if you just set it on the property for storage, it doesn't require a building permit. If you, if you're gonna hook up the power to it, which some people do for lights, then you gotta get a building permit for that power hookup.
Yep, any kind of utilities, water or power.
All right, this is Chair Antiveros. I am not seeing any other hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, please go to number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item number two, CUP 2407 is a conditional use permit for forest product processing and a cottage industry. This is in AR zoning in the Timberline Fernwood area. Thanks for sharing your screen, Kelly, and go ahead and orient the commission.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This request is for Forest Products Processing and Cottage Industry. All right, so the Forest Products Processing portion will cover the sawmill and outdoor storage of wood. And the cottage industry is so that this applicant can turn it into furniture and finish some woodwork. And that would be conducted primarily within a detached garage. This project will take place in the Timberline Fernwood area on the applicant's property. This is the project site just north of Copeland. I think some of you are very familiar with that area. And here's an aerial photo of the property. You can see the home is in the center of the property, and then there are two detached garages here. It looks like this might be some storage that was captured on the aerial photo. Here's the applicant's site plan. You can see the house and then the garage over here. There's a kiln and a mill that are proposed as part of this project. They're relatively near the property line, which we can talk about further in a second. But then I'll also point out that all of the storage is up here. The applicant did a noise study themselves and provided readings at all of the property lines. The one that was the highest was at 63 dBA. And staff typically recommends 50 dBA for this use. Because the zoning ordinance already lists that for various different uses, it's a good standard that we usually like to go to. The applicant did actually receive a letter of support from the property owner that would be most affected by the noise, adjacent to the highest reading. And the applicant only proposes to run the saw for one to three hours per week. So the impact here might be a little different from past cases. There has been complaints about this case. At least one neighbor mentioned noise, exhaust fumes, outdoor storage, road damage, and fire danger. But the applicant has been taking these concerns seriously and is considering screening the property to reduce visual impacts. And just as a reminder, here's a decibel chart. So you can see that 50 decibels on this chart is about the level of a refrigerator. 60 decibels is about a conversation level. We also sometimes say that 50 decibels is about a conversation level. So some of the charts vary a little bit, but just to say that 50 is relatively low. Because this applicant has already received several letters of support, I thought it would cover a little bit of citizen participation in here to keep you up to date. The applicant received six letters of support from various neighbors. Staff received one call and protest, and that person indicated that they would be providing written opposition for you. And all of this will be included in your packet next month. Staff does anticipate there may be more public comments coming in. This was previously a code enforcement case, so that's why we, we are seeing a little bit more activity with this one. Staff is going to be considering compliance with the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan in their analysis. And are there any questions or comments on this one?
Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
There we go. Mic is on. Yeah, Kelly, I would like to accompany you when you post the property. Both Commissioner Wilson and I live rather close area-wise, so it'll be a very easy thing for me to just meet you there or at the junction of Copeland and Gunman Road when you go out to post it. So I'll just send you an email as, as a reminder. So that's pretty much it right now.
Perfect. Yep, I'll, I'll get with you on the scheduling next week, Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you.
All right, I am not seeing any additional hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, let's move to item number three.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So item number three is a design review, DRO 2401. This is for a covered equestrian arena, riding arena in mountain air. And thanks for sharing your screen, Bob. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission. This is the Northern Arizona Riding Association Arena. Goes. Sorry, it takes a minute for it to move forward for some reason. Anyway, in this case, the property owner is Sabe Ranch LLC of Long Beach, California. I believe they bought that from the previous owner recent, fairly recently. The applicant is PJ Guff Stotson of Scottsdale, Arizona, who is basically the builder, the person who is constructing the arena or the cover. Location's at 3090 Old Mans Highway in Mountaineer. Size of the property's 9.32 acres. The zoning is general, and the request is design review for a covered riding arena. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. As you can see, it's right across the interstate from Kachina Village. It's actually pretty visible from the interstate or should be relatively visible from the interstate. This is Mountaineer down here. The Mountaineer plan area actually goes all the way up through here. So as a commercial use, this is required to go through a design review in the mountain plan area. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. This is the area proposed to be covered. It is an approved arena through a CUP that I'll talk about in a second. And some background on the, on this particular property. This equestrian center and horse boarding was originally approved in 2003. The uses include, there are quite a few uses on this associated with the CUP and not with the DRO, of course. This is just a DRO. Horse, horse boarding, RV parking, equestrian events, seminars, and riding lessons. It was last renewed in 2019, so it has a few years before it's, the CUP is renewed again. The applicant came in recently and applied for a building permit for this arena cover, for the cover over the arena. So staff identified it as being in Mountaineer and subject to the DRO requirements. This is a site plan. You can see the site plan down here shows the entire property. And then there's the insert here that shows the area where the arena would be installed or actually the cover on the arena. So this shows the covered area right here. And this isn't the arena rendering. The applicant did originally come in with a white color for it, and that did not fit the Mountaineer Area Plan guidelines, so staff did, did suggest a different color. And I think that this one will not show up nearly as much as white would. So it's one of those benefits of having design guidelines. It does help with, with some of the visual impacts in the county, especially since this is really close to Interstate 17 and probably very visible. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Mr. Short, this is Chair Antiveros. I am not seeing any hands raised. So with that, Mr. McNeely, would you please bump us to the administrative cases? Mr. McNeely, you're muted.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the admin renewals, we have two CUPs, CUP 2404. That is renewal for an educational facility and retreat center on near Townsend One on the road, on Loop Road. And staff is not seeing any issues with that renewal. The other one is CUP 2406, conditional use permit renewal in Blue Ridge for a community center. And staff is not seeing any issues with that one either. Are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners on either one of these administrative renewals?
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveros. I'm not seeing any. Personally speaking, I have no problem with that, with either of them moving forward administratively. With that, let's go ahead and move to Community Development Department update, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Melissa, our long-range planner, will be discussing items one, two, and three with you, and I believe she does have a presentation to show to you on these items. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, can you hear me?
Hear you great.
And you see the slideshow presentation?
Yep.
Great. Okay, so several updates. The first item on your agenda, which I don't have a slide for, is just to remind you that we're, we are still waiting to hear about the award notification on the EPA Brownfield Grant coming through NACOG. So we're hoping maybe by next month or in April that we'll find out whether or not that grant application is approved. But in the meantime, and I see that this slideshow is advancing on its own, the next two items to talk, discuss with you are the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update and then the County's Comprehensive Plan Update. You all received in your packet a memo from Sarah Decter with managing the, the comprehensive plan, rather, the regional plan for the city of Flagstaff. And the, the memo was giving some detailed instructions and information about how you as commissioners can be involved in reviewing the, the draft plan as the committee is looking at it. So all of the, the Flagstaff Regional Plan Committee meetings are in hybrid form, in person at the Flagstaff Public Works Building and also on Zoom. The, the memo also described when you as a planning commission will see the entire draft document. There will be scheduled a joint meeting with the, the city's planning commission in the spring or summer. And also then during the 60-day public review, you'll have a presentation on the entire document. But in the meantime, if you're interested in seeing what's happening as the review takes place, these are the next three upcoming meetings. And the topics that the committee will be reviewing. So on Tuesday next week, March 5, the committee will be reviewing parks, recreation, open space, and community events. And then on Tuesday, April 2, Water Resources and Energy Chapter. And then Wednesday, April 10, they'll actually be looking at the preferred scenario review and potential endorsement. Commissioner Ruggles is one of the members of the Regional Plan Committee, so you have representation there. But if any of the rest of you are interested, there are those different opportunities to join in and see what's happening so you can be familiar as that review takes place. Before I go to the next slide, are there any questions about the Flagstaff Regional Plan Review? Okay, we'll move on then. The next update is about the County's Comprehensive Plan, and I wanted to make the logos big so that you can see the distinction because, as you know, these plan updates are occurring somewhat simultaneously. Just a quick update on our focus groups. We've concluded those in terms of our community focus groups. We've reached out to 192 participants across the county and 30 focus groups. We do have one final group scheduled this Friday with Pondros High School. And all of those notes are posted on our project website, and we, we are continuing to update our theme summaries, which we, we gave you a preview of last week, or rather, last month. The countywide survey that was based partly on that theme summary was completed. And that concluded at, over the weekend of February 18. And the analysis is taking place now. The results will be ready in March, and we hope in, at your March study session to give you some, to give you some, some detailed update about the results of the countywide survey. Remember, this was a, a telephone survey. It was random sample telephone survey and conducted by a professional research firm. And then the next two items that we wanted to spend a little bit of time with would be the process to forming the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. And then also potential amendments that would be coming to you on your study session agenda next month to amend both the comprehensive plan and the zoning code regarding the adoption of major amendment timeframe. And so last week, on the twentieth, we met with the Board of Supervisors and they endorsed this process to form the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. And the, the purpose of this advisory group, these would be invited citizens of the county that would, that would form, be formed specifically to review the draft of the plan, the goals and policies, the implementation plan, as well as any indicators that are chosen. And then they would be advisory to both the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, and staff. So the, the process that the board endorsed was that we will be, as staff, providing each supervisor with a list of potential candidates from the focus group, people that were attending the focus groups, and then also other people who have expressed interest in being involved in this capacity with the Comprehensive Plan Update. Each supervisor will recommend ideally four participants from their district and then send those names to staff. We will then reach out to those participants and ask them to complete a letter of interest to make sure that they're available and, and available to participate in the process. And then what we'll be asking would be the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission to review those letters and to make the final selection of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. And, and this ties together then the specific role of the commission that's identified in Arizona Vice Statute. So then you will have more direct hand in choosing that committee and then having regular updates. And we, we are looking then at getting this group organized pretty, pretty soon and, and beginning meetings this spring of two thousand and twenty-four. So before I go on to some potential amendments, did you have any questions or comments about this process? I will, I will let you know then, I just remember we had a, over almost two hundred.
Yeah, this is Chair Antivarius. I certainly did not mean to cut you off or interrupt you. After you asked if there were any questions, I did see Commissioner Wilson's hand go up. So Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Michelle. I'm, I'm curious why we would just have the Chair, while I have the utmost respect for both the Chair and Vice Chair, why we would limit it to just their review? And is, is there, is that by statute?
No, it, that's not by statute. That was the process that we recommended to the board that they endorsed. And that was to, well, number one, avoid any quorum requirements on the part of having the commission involved in, in this. And also to make it a fairly rapid process so that the Chair and Vice Chair could get together and represent the commission as a whole in, in looking at that list. And, and just to, these lists are fairly extensive. We've had, as I mentioned, almost two hundred contacts. So the, the supervisors will have a fairly robust group of potential invitees to look at.
Thank you. And would the, would the function of this CPAG be similar to the area plan committees that, that rewrote area plans that I'm familiar with? Or a higher level than that?
No, you're, you're absolutely right. It's sim- very, very similar. It's just that the, the charge then will be to review the comprehensive plan instead of an area plan. And the, the process is slightly different this time in that this is the process that, that the board has endorsed to forming a, a group to, to take on that role.
Okay. And my last thought would just, is just a thought. Since each supervisor is assigned to a district of similar population sizes, it would seem that each one should have an equal number of members on this committee to equally represent those population sizes to me, just looking at it from the outside. Thanks very much.
Yeah, Commissioner Wilson, that's a, that's a great point. We, we would ask each supervisor to recommend at least four participants, knowing that in the end, we will, we will have at least two from each district so that the representation, like you said, is the same across the district. But, but also knowing that not everybody is going to be able to participate, we'll, we'll need a, a larger list of names to inquire about.
Michelle, this is Chair Antivarius. What is the total number of members on this group?
Well, there's not a hard and fast limit. We have suggested at least ten, so two per district. But then there could be alternates. And then, you know, if there are other, others who the board recommends that, that would be a broader representation of safer, of a different group, then it could certainly be expanded to include more than ten. So there, yeah, there wasn't an exact number, but we would suggest at least ten, meaning two from each district.
Okay, okay. And you actually answered my next question, which was going to be, are there going to be alternates so that these meetings can go forward with a, really a full group of people for good conversation? So thank you. That answers my question. I don't see any, Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
Yes, considering the timeline of this, one thing that I have not asked before is which district boundaries will be used? The two thousand and twenty-two ones that will take effect after the two thousand and twenty-four elections or the current use of the prior to two thousand and twenty-two boundaries?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Does it matter?
Well, the Commissioner Ruggles, that, that's an important question, actually, because the way we have been organizing the focus groups have been based on our current boundaries, not the two thousand and twenty-four election boundaries. So, so that's what we will be referring back to the supervisors, are those participants who join the focus groups within the current district boundaries, knowing that they'll change in twenty, for the two thousand and twenty-four election. But they're actually have, they have not changed yet. It, it's a complicated, somewhat of a complicated process with the district changes. But we were, we were using the current boundaries.
Okay, that's what I thought. Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Not seeing any other hands raised, so please go ahead.
Thank you. And then the, the next update that we would like to bring to your attention would be a couple of amendments, one to the comprehensive plan and then one to the zoning code, along with some other minor zoning code amendments. And several of you who are familiar with the recent Donipar Timberline Fernwood Area Plan Update are well aware that our current both comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance require that major amendments to the comprehensive plan just be heard by the planning commission at its regular meeting in October. So this is language both in our current comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance. And that then, that October meeting date then would, would mean that our comprehensive plan would either come to you this year, October of two thousand and twenty-four, or October of two thousand and twenty-five, at October of a year. And either of those, the October of two thousand and twenty-four is very quick. October of two thousand and twenty-five is farther out. And because of some of the delays that we experienced with updating the area plan, we're proposing that that text be changed to allow more flexibility in when a major amendment can be heard. And so the middle part of the slide shows you what Arizona Vice Statute requires, that all major amendments proposed for adoption to the comprehensive plan by the board shall be presented at a single public hearing during the calendar year the proposal is made. So we've looked at other, other codes and plans from around the state and we have, we've come up with some potential amendment language to the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance regarding this matter, which could potentially read, "All applications for major plan amendments to the comprehensive plan shall be presented at a single public hearing within twelve months of the date of submission of a complete application." And so if this is the case, then that would still mean that all major amendments be presented at a single public hearing during the calendar year, but takes out the restriction of that specific month. And with that, then, the next couple of slides, I show you how that, the schedule for adopting the comprehensive plan could change. So we would have to amend both the comprehensive plan as a minor amendment and then the zoning ordinance. And then we are thinking that along with a zoning ordinance amendment, we have some additional non-substantive cleanups that we could wrap into it. And we will be, we're looking to bring this forward to you next month during your study session then for a possible public hearing in, in May. And the next slides, two slides, just show you how that time, that amendment could change a timeline. And so this says accelerated schedule because we, we were talking to the board and to you about speeding up, if you will, adopting the comprehensive plan. So we are not bringing both the comprehensive plan and the regional plan to you during the same month. And so the accelerated schedule then would have, as I mentioned, bring a comprehensive plan amendment to you in October of two thousand and twenty-four. With this amendment, we could potentially bring an amendment to you for the comprehensive plan in the spring of, of two thousand and twenty-five as a major amendment. So that's something to, to think about. And like I said, we'll bring it back to you for study session next month, but we can answer any questions at this point on that.
Michelle, this is Chair Antivarius. I was just wondering how the October, the, the month of October was chosen to be the month that would hear major amendments? I'm, I'm just curious.
We're curious as well. I don't know that that was something that any of us have history about. I just, do you have any more information?
No, I believe it's, it's just been in the County's Comprehensive Plan for the last couple of iterations. It was an interpretation, I guess, at some point in time of, of state statute that you had to pick a month, when in fact, we've reviewed this and said, no, that's, that's very, that's very constraining and there's no reason to pick one month, just within, just within one year as, as Melissa drafted in that language for more flexibility. So, so yeah, something that existed for some time and just kind of historic decision that was made by, by previous commission, commissions, previous boards, previous staff. And we, we feel this is better serving the public and the community to give, give all of us a little more flexibility with this process.
Yeah, gotcha. Thank you for that. And again, I was just curious. All right, Michelle, let's see. Do you have any more to present?
No, that's it.
Okay, I am not seeing any other hands raised. So I think that, Mr. McNeely, we can go ahead and go to the Board of Supervisors update, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. So for the Board of Supervisors, I believe it was last week, last, a week ago yesterday, last Tuesday, we took to them the West Peak Zone Change and amended final plat that you, that this body had recommended approval of. And the Board of Supervisors did in fact approve that zone change and amended final plat. West, the West Peak Zone Change, it's the West Peak subdivision, of course, if you remember, on West Route sixty-six, west of the Flagstaff city limits at the intersection of Naval Observatory Road and West Route sixty-six, really where West Route sixty-six becomes the, becomes the on-ramp, if you're westbound, onto, onto I forty. So that zone change from AR, from RR five, five acre minimum down to one acre minimum was approved. Any questions on that?
Mr. McNeely, I'm not seeing any. So with that, I think we can go ahead and go to Commission and Staff Roundtable, please. So, Commission and Staff, you're up. Vice Chair Burton.
Yeah, so I was thinking how we've, we've talked about how we want to display our names for public purposes. And there seems, the way that teams like list us out, I think having Commissioner in front makes it a little confusing for us to keep track of who's who when hands are raised. So I'm thinking that how would people feel about using like first initial last name, comma, Commissioner? Like Jay Ruggles, Commissioner? What are, what are people's thoughts on that?
Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
I think that would work rather well, so I have no problem with it. As long as I can remember.
I know. And this is Chair Antivarius, and I will say, I do know what Vice Chair Burton is talking about because before, when I could look at the participant list, I was so used to everybody's initials and then suddenly everyone's first name changed to C with, with the Commissioner and that. And I, I think you guys saw me stumbling a bit last time. So I'm absolutely in favor of it because it's going to make my life easier. So there's my two cents. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Okay, so Vice Chair Burton, I think that that's good, a very good suggestion. And like Commissioner Ruggles said, let's all try to remember our new sign-in. So it will be name, comma, Commissioner. And that really, we all know who each other is, and I know I'm just stating the obvious here. But when we have a list of, you know, forty participants, sometimes it's been even far higher than that. And all the names kind of tend to blur. And as you guys know, the people, the individuals participating from the public don't recognize who the, the Planning and Zoning Commission members are. So it's for that reason that it's, that it would be important to put our titles behind our names. And with that, Vice Chair Burton, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's any update on us actually getting into any physical location.
Mr. McNeely, I think you can take that question because I've been wondering that a long time, for years now, literally, like that was not, I was not exaggerating that. In fact, we now, I do think I've kept count, but I believe the last time that this commission met in person was in February of two thousand and twenty, which means we are now beginning our fifth year of meeting on Zoom and not having in-person hearings. So go ahead. You know what, Mr. McNeely, before you answer, Commissioner Williams' hand is raised. Commissioner Williams, go ahead. And then, Mr. McNeely, you go ahead and pick up thereafter.
Okay, I just had a question about changing the name. Is that something we do on our end? Like, do I have to change that? Or I don't know well enough to know how in the hell to do that.
You have the ability to change your name.
Say that again?
You do have the ability to change your name.
Okay, I guess I'll.
You know, Commissioner Williams, you know, like when you're signing in, like right there, it has you sign in with the name? Or is yours already programmed in, so it just knows?
Yeah, I just, I just clicked the link in the email and it lets me in.
Vice Chair Burton, I know what, I know what Commissioner Williams is talking about because mine, I clicked something that says always sign in with this name. How do you modify that?
That's what I'm looking for. They keep changing things.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I can, between now and next month, I can poke around and see if I can figure it out.
Okay. Thanks, Commissioner Williams. All right, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I was just going to reinforce your question about when we can actually meet in person. I'm a strong advocate for that. I'm very disappointed that we haven't been able to do that for so long. And if for some reason the county just can't seem to find a place, I would be happy to offer to host it in my classroom that now has full automated cameras and online capabilities at my facility. So if the county can't do it, I'm ready to step up and supply that service for them.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Wilson. All right, and with that, uh, Mr. McNeeley, why don't you go ahead and?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. We know this is, this has been a um, a topic of discussion. Um, for, for several years now. So uh, a- as, as many of you all know, and as we've discussed previously. Um. The Planning and Zoning Commission for many years met in the Board's chambers. Um. There's now an expectation and, and certainly uh, direction from, from the Board and from. County management that all public hearings be in a format that they are accessible to be participated in. Um, remotely as well. Um, the whole world got used to being able to attend meetings remotely. Um. And it does serve our public while it's a county as large as ours, certainly. Um, so. When the Board's chambers were last, were last renovated. Um, they uh, with the, with constraint on space. There, the dais was actually shrunk. It always was designed just for the Board and for, and for some key staff members. Um, and if you all remember, those of you who, who used to come in person, sometimes the. Commissioners would, would literally double up in a little bit of a space. Uh, in order to all fit on the dais. Well, that dais is even smaller now and just, it was very specifically designed now for five Board members. And will not accommodate um, this commission. So. The Board of Supervisors Chambers is no longer an option. We realize these are tough decisions and tough choices to be made. So our next option that our department looked into is using our conference room, the Thomas Conference Room. Um, as a, what we, what we typically call a hybrid meeting space or hybrid, in this case, hybrid hearing. Because being able to hold a hearing is, is very much um, is above and beyond what's necessary just to hold a hybrid meeting. And the last report that we gave you all is um, with the equipment that is installed in our Thomas Meeting Room. It does not function properly for a, for a hybrid hearing. Um, for a hearing, obviously, it has to function properly, that if someone is given the option of attending. The meeting remotely, that they can in fact hear what is going on in the meeting and they can in fact participate, speak. Um, in that meeting. And currently, our Thomas Conference Room will not function. Uh, for that purpose. And one, one of the reasons that won't function is because of um. The uh, the interior of that room is just not sound mitigated properly to make that technology work. So that's where we're at currently. As many of you all know, in our fiscal cycle. Um, we are um, coming to the end of FY24. At the end of, well, the, the FY ends June 30th and a new, and we anticipate. The Board of Supervisors will approve a budget um, by the end of this fiscal year. Um, that, so that issue is something that is going to have to get budgeted. So that will be something that would have to be added probably pretty significantly. We don't have any estimates yet. Um, of what's necessary to have that con- conference room function. Um, the county does not otherwise have a facility that will function. And while I appreciate um, Commissioner Wilson's offer. Uh, it is very difficult for the county's IT system. Which um, IT systems and local government have become more and more and more risk adverse um, to keep those systems. Um, uh, from being compromised. Um, by, by outsider hacking agencies or, or um, what have you. So it does become pretty difficult when the county tries to use another facility. So um, that, that is really where it has been. Uh, at this point, I would really like to get, I know we, we have reached out and asked. Um, Commissioner by Commissioner previously. And the last time we asked this, really a majority of the Commissioners were, were okay with continuing to meet. Online. It, it has functioned for us. Um, so if there's a change in that, that's something we'd like to know and certainly we can take that um, to the Board. And discuss it in, in budget hearing as to whether or not that would be a priority. To create a Planning and Zoning Commission um, hearing um, room, if you will. Um, and, and that would need to be in a, in a county. In a county building where it's county IT systems that are, that are serving it. Um. That is, yeah, that is the long and short. I will point out that our last, our last public hearing. That we held at the Board of Supervisors for a zone change, which was opposed. Um, by, by several neighbors, as, as you all probably remember. Um, had zero public participation in person. There was protect, uh, public participation. And um, and comments uh, by, from people who participated online. Um, no one um, from the public, the applicant or the public. Um, participated in person, even though that was, that was an option given to them. So there's, there's a lot of balance here in, in, you know, level of effort. Um, in what, what really serves the public and what's, what's in the, uh, what's in the, what's in the public interest. Um. So Chair Antiveras, what, what I would offer, it's a great discussion to have at this point. We've got time for it. Um, but I would offer, uh, I would be happy to do a, a um, outreach to all the Commissioners individually again. Void a um, a quorum and ask, you know, uh, if this is a priority or not to, to meet in person.
Um, okay, Mr. McNeeley, hold, hold off on that uh. Question for a minute. I would like to hear what Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Wilson have to say. Commissioner Williams, go first, please.
I have to say about a hybrid. Wanting hybrid meetings? Is that what you're asking?
Uh, well, your hand, well, you know what? You don't, you don't have to say anything.
Oh, you know what? Oh, no, mine, sorry. My hand, that was raised from like ages ago, so let me. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would just like to offer, the, the county conducts. Hybrid meetings um, routinely already all over the county and. Um, we did it as the Donnie Park Area Plan Committee um, from Cromer School. The Sheriff's Department does it multiple places across the county every month for neighborhood watch meetings. Um, so it, it's currently happening. All over the place and. To hear that for some reason, this is the only meeting that can't be. Makes it difficult to understand, perhaps. Um, checking in with some of the folks that have conducted those other meetings and find out how they're able to do it. Um. Might be helpful.
It, we can do that and we will do that with our IT and, and um, we have a lot of interaction with our IT and, and have had a lot of interaction with our IT on this issue. Um, I will point out, there's a big difference between a public hearing with legal implications. For public hearing, public participation and, and some of the other meetings that the county holds. We, we hold a lot of hybrid meetings here with staff as well. Uh, and e- even in our Thomas Conference Room and, and by our um, our. Research, basically our, our trial runs with that room and we did some serious trial runs with it. We determined. This, this is not going to function for people from the public reliably being able to um, to. Understand what's going on in the hea- in the hearing, the public hearing and being able to participate in the public hearing. So. But we can certainly, yeah, we can certainly continue to explore and find out how else we can make this work.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I would be in favor of taking a, just a unofficial voice vote amongst us today. Um, just so we know where we all stand, maybe I'm wrong thinking. In person might be better. So, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Ruggles, would, what are your, go ahead, I see your hand raised.
Well. I think everybody knows that I am definitely uh, in favor of in-person meetings for this commission. And the um. Well, the atmosphere that it creates. The other thing is if we have only electronic means of meeting. For this commission. I would like to know how that serves a part of the public. That does not have internet. They have no broadband service. They do not have a telephone. And there are plenty of people in the county. At remote locations. That do not have those services that in some instances in the, in the past have been willing to drive. Pretty long distance to attend a public meeting that is held in person. So that's. That just reinforces what I have to say about having a place that you can bring the public in, in person. And the, this commission can meet in person.
Mr. McNeeley, could you address that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so what staff has, has made available, if, if um, and it ha- it hasn't come up yet. Um, but when we, when we've thought through this uh, possibility. We could always make um, right here in our building because uh, actually, we're all here. Um, uh, running this from, from our, from our county computers. That we, that we, in our lobby, we could make a computer available for someone to participate from our lobby. Um, during public hearings. So that's, that's um, that's what we can offer. Uh, we haven't had anybody approach us with, with that need yet.
Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is still raised. Do you have additional comments?
Yeah, I've got a comment relative to that. Uh, depending on the number of people who uh, happen to come in, uh. That may be unworkable under cer- certain circumstances. Um, I know that may sound negative, but uh. My approach in the past, when I've actually had to work for a living, is to look at the worst case first. In determining how to do things like this.
Um, absolutely. We, we can, we can look at the worst case. A- and again, uh, we have yet to have had any issue with a, with a member of pub, of the public. Um, when they receive notice for hearing, um, letting us know that they, that they can't participate. So, but we will um, we will continue to explore that.
Well.
Uh, Mr. I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Ruggles.
My only comment relative to that would be that um. You know, it is always wise to uh, plan for the worst possible case and to say that we haven't had something like that occur. Doesn't mean it won't occur in the future. So I think I've said enough.
Okay, um, Mr. McNeeley, this is Chair Antiveras again. I, I know um, that we have had this, this conversation or discussion amongst staff and commission. It seems many times over. Over the, over a matter of years now and it does keep kind of bubbling up, if you will. On. I know that if, I believe that, you know what? First of all, I want to go back and ask you if you could please remind me. What that zone change was that was at the, the last public hearing that we had?
Um. Madam Chair, are you asking about the uh, the zone change that last went to the, to the Board of Supervisors?
Uh, no, I was, uh, is, oh, is that the one that you were referring to, the one that we were updated on tonight's hearing over?
Yes, yes. So the, the point was that um, the Board is holding their meetings hybrid. Um, so it's in person, the Board, uh, s- some of them are present in person. Um, in the chambers is, say, it was um, a week ago Tuesday. So um, last week, Tuesday evening for their public hearing. Um, some of them are present um, in person, some staff are present in person. We, we were certainly present in person and gave a presentation in person. Um, however, as a public hearing on a zone change that was opposed. At the Board Hearing, which is, which is hybrid and has the ability to, to be in person or online. Um, no members of the public, the applicant or uh, opposed neighbors chose to come in person. They all chose to, um, they all chose to participate online. So that is some of the indicator that we see that, that online participation is, is um. From, from what we can tell generally, uh, preferable to um. To most members of the public and uh, and to many of our applicants.
Okay, I'm glad I asked that question because I completely misunderstood what you had previously said. Now I got it. Okay. Um. You know, I have always been, this is just me personally, I've always been a proponent of, of in-person. I know that um. Other commissions, other boards. Have gone back, they've kind of shaken off, what am I going to call it, the COVID slumber, if you will. Um, some things have stuck around. This is my opinion and mine only, okay, but I feel that some things. Have, have stuck around longer than uh. Have been necessary. Uh, I have always been a proponent of in-person. Uh. Actually seeing people, actually meeting people. Uh, seeing body language, um. You know, actually looking at people. So. Um, I know an argument can be made for either side of this. That is where I'm at and where I have been for years. My position is going to stand. On Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised. Why don't you go ahead and pitch in here?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I'm, I'm in Bisbee, beautiful Bisbee, interesting place. Um. I agree a hundred percent, you know. I guess it's a, it's a personal thing. I would like to look the other Commissioners in the eye. And I think it's a very uh. It's really too bad that chambers were renovated without planning and zoning in mind. I. Just, uh, that's a. Dis- uh, di- very disappointing decision and um. While I understand that uh. There's a huge value to an online option. Since our county is so huge. Um. At the same time, just having interaction among the Commissioners to get to know each other better, to look each other in the eye. I. Call me old fashioned, but uh, I think there's a big advantage to that. So I would encourage uh. And I, I know Thomas Auditorium is a, a tough space. I don't know what it would take, but I would certainly encourage. Uh. An option. That g- gives us the ability to meet together in person in a hybrid manner and uh. And short of that, maybe uh, Commissioner Wilson would invite us all out for coffee once a week. We can meet out there and just uh, get to know each other. Thanks.
You know, um, this is Chair Antiveras again. Um. This is the only uh. Literally the only thing in my life. That on, has not, that is still meeting. On, in this remote fashion. Every other thing has gone back. And um. I think may, perhaps Commissioner Best put it best when he said, you know, maybe, maybe we're old fashioned. I, I, I don't know. On, maybe that is it, but there is something about on. You know, I know when I've ran into Commissioners, uh, I haven't seen some for years, literally. Um. And yet we see each other. I, when I say see, air quotes around that. Uh, we meet, but we're somehow very disconnected. And. I think I would like to, I know that I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again. I cannot for the life of me understand. How this remodel. At the Board, in the Board Chambers happened. On, because the Board members. Were all aware that this was where the Planning and Zoning Commission. Met. I'm. Did they ever feel that the commission was going to meet again? I'm wondering, I, I, I can't figure out how this happened. On, and what I s- what I, when I, I truly mean this because at the same time that remodel was taking place. I had one of my business locations underwent a major remodel as well. And there was a very strong focus in. The purpose for it. And um. I don't know how a complete remodel happened and in my opinion. Ended up going backwards. And if I remember, it was a, a great cost. Am I, am I correct on that? That it, it cost a pretty penny? Uh. To do what was done?
Madam Chair, correct. Yeah, it was, it was expensive and a lot of the expense had to deal with, with the um, getting the technology into that room. To make it function um, the way that was, is necessary. Um, and when the Board runs that hearing, it requires IT staff um, on hand. Um, it requires um. Um. The communications staff, the County Communications Department staff on hand and requires two people from the Clerk's Office. Um, on hand as well, um, still even to make that work. So that's um, uh, that's, that's part of um, what, what got pretty unwieldy. With the Board Chamber um. renovation and how how their meetings have to be run. So that is that is certainly certainly part of part of the issue as well. Was there another question in there that?
Well, no, not really. And I really don't want to sound, you know what I mean, like I'm being critical. I guess that the that where the real emphasis on this redesign was to redesign it with the purpose of it being able to be hybrid. Am I correct with that?
Absolutely. That was that was a that's what ended up consuming the space in that room, which which left less, they lost seats as well, in addition to the board's diet space.
Okay. All right, I can see us continuing this conversation. But I am going to go ahead and ask Commissioner Ruggles. His hand was raised first and then Commissioner Wilson's was second. So if you guys would please go ahead.
Well, this is going to test your sense of humor, but it's too late to fire the architect or the interior designer. Second thing is, I think everyone should read Ms. Shaw's comment in the chat box. So that being said, in the process of looking at this in the past, I've also taken the time to look at a number of other jurisdictions that do something similar to Board of Supervisors, like City Council, like City Council and other jurisdictions around the state. And it looks like they've gotten up to date with hybrid meetings, no problem. But the design of the chamber and the Diaz is such that it can accommodate more than just the members of the or the commission who is using it, the City Council, Board of Supervisors. And in light of what Ms. Shaw had to say, I think a little thinking out of the box would be a very good thing to do here. So thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you, Commissioner Rose. One thing I would need to respond to that is while the space was was one issue, the other issue is that, as I described before, it takes IT personnel on hand for the duration of the meeting, takes communications staff on hand for the duration of the meeting, and the clerk's staff on hand for the duration of the meeting. And and those other departments obviously don't fall under our department. And and we've certainly had some indication that 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 would be that would be pretty tough sell for the Planning and Zoning Commission hearings. I will point out a couple of other things that that for just relative in good information to have is the Parks and Rec Board, which is it's which is a appointed board, the same as as the Planning and Zoning Commission. They are meeting 100% online. They do not meet in person either. The the county's Workforce Development Board, also an appointed board, same as same as the Planning and Zoning Commission, also meets completely online. There are other boards, when we get outside the county, that many of us interact with. There's the Metro Plan Board, which does which does occasionally give a hybrid option. But they have a facility over at Mountain Line that that accommodates that. The CPWAC Board that we've interacted with late recently, actually updating our conference plan. They they in fact meet exclusively online as well. So I I know, at least in the case of Parks and Rec Board and the Workforce Development Board, those are appointed boards in the exact same scenario that you all are in, in that they don't have a space to meet hybrid. So they're meeting exclusively online so that the so that the meeting, the hearing is is available to the public online.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would disagree with my friend, Mr. Ruggles or Commissioner Ruggles. They should be fired because based on what Mr. McNeely has told us, we went from something that was working okay to something that might work a little bit better, but now requires six additional staff members to conduct a meeting. Whoever approved that plan and the people that instituted it probably should be fired. And I certainly hope that they're not involved with future redesign decisions. And and second, I would say that the conference room there in the the county office building, Thomas or Thompson, all it needs is some acoustic treatments, that that's all it needs to be able to work. I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. McNeely told us earlier that it's it's purely an acoustics problem. That's not a difficult or expensive problem to solve. So I would, if nothing else, strongly encourage planning and zoning when they go to the budget this year request include something to conduct the acoustic treatments necessary in that conference room to make it work for what it needs to be. Thank you.
Absolutely. And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I would, it would be important that I point out that the board chambers were not working okay. As a matter of fact, prior to the extensive renovation that they recently went through, extensive and expensive, when the board tried to hold a public hearing on a planning and zoning item, the board members were there, it was a public hearing, it was a hybrid public hearing, and the meeting failed to happen because the technology failed and could not happen. So the board had to continue the meeting and continue it to to their next public hearing because they couldn't hold the hearing. That is a little bit of a fear that that certainly county staff has had after that experience is having something that doesn't work, that isn't functioning properly for a legal hearing and not being able to hold the hearing. So that's that that was the predicament we were in with the with the board chambers previously. And and obviously prioritizations were made on how to make it function for what the what the board prefers and and what they decided on. And that's that's the renovation they got.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
Yeah, I know we're beating a dead horse here. But I, okay, so I know that the systems didn't work well before COVID. I remember the struggles in that space and was honestly appalled every time I was in there that it was in the state that it was in. Because as you all know, I manage the classroom support team on the NAU campus. So all we do is AV. We maintain, update, repair, all that stuff. And we have hundreds of systems around campus. None of them require any IT personnel to hold anyone's hand to run. And that's hybrid situations as well, where they're holding classes. So I'm guessing that the county hired out a contractor who is local, which we do not hire any locals here because they're not capable of, honestly, in my personal opinion, it's only my opinion, of tackling that massive scope of what's required for these complex systems. Because they are very complex systems, but when they work, they work. And so someone has to be hired that knows how to do it to start with. And I'm guessing that there, I mean, obviously, I wasn't a part of it, so I don't know all the backend. I still don't understand why it takes so much personnel to run. But again, like I said, I've never seen the system, so I can't say. But it's it's a little disconcerting that it is at that point. And that those decisions were made. And yes, those systems are extremely expensive. And they have gotten even more expensive. Our standard setup on campus is somewhere, it it a standard classroom is almost $50,000. And to have hybrid capability like extensive is close to about 70. So it's very expensive to put these systems in place. And I understand that. But it's very disappointing that the decisions were made that that, yeah. I don't even know how to go any further. It's just coming from an AV standpoint and understanding the majority of how these systems work. It's just not comprehensive to me why it requires so much manual intervention when it shouldn't. So I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. I'm certainly not going to put words into into Vice Chair Burton's mouth here. But it sounds like we have a professional who knows that all of these problems that are being presented to the commissioner to commission tonight as unattainable obstacles are really not. And perhaps rather than reinventing the wheel, maybe reaching out and finding out what works. For example, a go to would obviously be now that we all know this, perhaps NAU and saying, what are you doing right that we could improve on? We don't need to reinvent the wheel here. It's it just seems like we're we're, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say it. It seems like we're being given a lot of excuses for why it can't work. And the truth of the matter is 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 that it can work. So and again, I'm I'm, that is my last comment, I promise everybody. Commissioner Best, you're up.
Thank you. I think we should maybe have a subcommittee. And I think Vice Chair Burton should be on it and do a walkthrough of Thomas Auditorium. Maybe get somebody from the city who has, they have a very successful city council set up there and they do planning and zoning there as well. My bet is that the money that went into the upgrade at the supervisors auditorium there is, you know, 70,000 times 10. You know, tell me if I'm wrong, but let's just try to do this at some reasonable level. There's no reason why Vice Chair Burton couldn't walk through and we can get somebody to give us some advice and possibly approach supervisors in the next budget round. And I'm sure that whatever we create would be useful for many other meetings. That's a suggestion. And I I don't know where that should come from, maybe from Mr. McNeely, put that together. He's the manager of planning and zoning, so maybe that'd be a start. Thanks.
We we will get started and we'll go to, obviously, this is far beyond the Community Development Department. And
Don't overcomplicate it, please. Just have some people walk through and get some common sense ideas without making it. You know, that to me is what happened with supervisors' chambers. It got to be such a big deal. I can only imagine what the budget was, and it actually lost an important function. That doesn't make sense. So if we could just go at this from common sense. And I I don't know how county staff does that. I think the county does that a whole lot better than the city in many ways. I am always impressed by the county's bureaucracy and how open and frequently just plain simple and common sense it is. So I hope somebody could just step forward and just, let's have coffee in there. Let's let's throw some ideas around, whatever it takes. Thanks, that's enough for me.
I appreciate that and we'll keep it simple. And that's that is part of the charge and part of the challenge is keeping it simple and keeping it something we can afford. So certainly. Yeah, we we will, we will, we will report back to you next month on on what we found from the professionals at the county in IT and facilities and then up to county management.
Yeah, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antivarius. And you probably feel like you've been a little bit shotgun blasted. That might even be an understatement. And I, all of us were just being very honest in our comments. I know that I promised not to say anything else, but I hope that it wasn't 70,000 times 10 because I'm pretty good at math. And that would mean that that would have been a $700,000 upgrade, which is heading, that's that's over a half a million. So enough said, would you please, Mr. McNeely, would you please take, thank you for listening, first of all, and would you please take the comments that you've heard, suggestions that you've heard, kind of digest them? And yeah, if you could maybe give us a bit of an update of other thoughts at the next meeting, I think that would be appreciated by all of us.
Absolutely, we'll do. And I'll go to the horse's mouths, which I've which I've been going to at facilities and in IT and 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 say, no, really? Like, we've been blown off on this, we continue to get blown off on this. We got to move ahead some way and it'll it'll be money in order to in order to make it happen. But I concur, there's some way, if that's a priority, we can make that happen. The important thing is we hold the public hearings and we serve the community in the important public function that you serve.
Okay, you know, I think probably, okay, I think we've exhausted that this this topic. I'm going to ask if anybody else, staff or commissioners, had any any other comments, questions, concerns, thoughts? Raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any. My clock shows 5:20. Why don't we go ahead and take a 10 minute break and we will start the meeting promptly, the hearing, public hearing promptly at 5:30? Okay, see you then.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for members of the public, this is Jess McNeely, the Community Development Department staff. The Planning and Zoning Commissioners hold their hearing, their study session, their hearing with cameras off in order to preserve bandwidth. So we ask that if you are in this hearing, you please turn your camera off. So I see Mr. Alex Clinton as a guest. If you could please, if you could please turn your camera off. Thank you. The camera icon is in the on the upper toolbar. So it should be kind of in towards the upper right hand corner. There you go. So it should be kind of in, towards the upper right-hand corner. There you go.
All right, uh, Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Ontiveris. Uh, is staff ready to go?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, staff is ready to hold your public hearing.
Okay, all right. All right, this is Chair Ontiveris. Uh, it is five thirty PM and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm gonna begin by meeting, reading the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the February twenty eighth meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval. Are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have fifteen days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Um, also, please do not use the comment function for discussions. It is for communicating with staff if you are having some kind of a technical issue. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. This, would everyone please stand? And Mr. McNeely, would you please lead us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the January thirty first, twenty twenty four minutes. If there are no uh, corrections or additions to these, Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noted that on page. It, in our sta- in, in the uh, agenda package on page eleven, so the vote for item number two. Um, it says vote and it lists several names, but it doesn't say how the vote went, either yea or nay. Um, and that, that same thing occurs again on the following page, following the next item. It just says who voted, but not how. And I believe that it should say how we voted.
Okay, um, so I am looking at that.
Just above the paragraph three there on page eleven.
Okay, when you say you wanna know how it voted, can you be, like, be specific? Cause it says Vice Chair Burton made a motion to approve. Oh, yeah, so your thing should be ayes or nays.
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha. Okay, and then where was the other one?
Um, on the next page, um, at the very bottom, last line on, on page twelve.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, um, I do agree with that cor- uh, with that correction. Um, let me get back over to my other screen. Um, okay, I am not seeing any hand, other hands raised for corrections. Uh, so you know what, Commissioner Wilson, I'm gonna kind of put you on the spot. Would you make a motion to approve these minutes with those corrections, please?
Sure, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, which was dated. Let me scroll up to the date. Sorry for the delay. The January thirty first meeting minutes, um, with, with an update at a future point. Reflecting how the two different votes that occurred, each commissioner voted.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion for the approval of the January thirty first, twenty twenty four minutes with corrections as stated. Made by, the motion was made by Commissioner Wilson. The second was by Vice Chair Burton. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Uh, I'll abstain.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe?
I agree, yea.
Okay, Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Chair, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Uh, the first item on the public hearing agenda this evening, case number CUP twenty three zero seven six. Is a request to use a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence and staff is recommending approval. I will first ask if any commissioner who wishes to discuss this case to please raise their hand. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, um, I will go ahead and accept a motion and a second for approval of CUP twenty three zero seven six, please.
Madam Chair, I uh, make a motion that we approve CUP twenty three dash zero seven six as presented with staff recommendations.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve CUP twenty three zero seven six. Uh, with conditions uh, in the staff report. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams? Aye. Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveris. I also vote aye, the mo- excuse me, the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, case number ZC two three zero zero two. Would staff please present?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a zone change request just west of the Parks area. Bob Short of our staff is managing this case. I see he already has his screen shared, so Bob, let's go ahead and get the presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Can you hear me okay?
Hear you great.
Okay, thank you. This case is the Deer Farm Road Zone Change, it's ZC twenty three oh, zero zero two. Just have to get my screen to advance. There we go.
Yeah, we actually lost your share there, Bob.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, you needed to reshare.
Okay. Okay, in this case, the uh, application, the property owner is Terra Rouge LLC of Flagstaff. The applicant is David Harton. The Flagstaff location of the property is on the north side of I forty, about one half mile west of the Pittman Valley Deer Farm Road exit. The current zoning is general as G-zone with a ten acre minimum parcel size and the size of the parcel seventeen point two five acres. And the request is a zone change from the G-zone uh, to the AR four zone. And this would allow the property to be divided up into four parcels. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see the Parks area here. This is the Pittman Valley exit right in here. Uh, Kadoffa Center is over in here somewhere. Uh, so this is the basic area. This is a zoning map showing the uh, the subject property. Uh, you can again see the exit right here and uh, the subject property is in the G-zone. It's surrounded, it's on one side of it. You, you, this is the actual deer farm. And then this is the one, this one acre subdivision known as Deer Park. Uh, this green, darker green area over here is the Parks area or Parks Plan area. Which is about one quarter mile from the subject property, so this particular zone change is not subject to the policies of the Parks area plan. This is an arrow photo showing the subject property and you can see that Deer Farm Road goes across the southern end of the uh, of the subject property. It's mostly clear with a few trees on there. And this is a picture of the property. It's very flat. And this is a uh, a survey. So Deer Farm Road is about, actually the uh, there is a highway easement, I believe it is called. That's eighty feet wide and that contains Deer Farm Road and Deer Farm Road is a county maintained road. This is a site plan, basically just simply showing that this would be split up into four parcels. It could not be split up into any more parcels. So it's a pretty simple, straightforward zone change. In terms of citizen participation, property owners within twelve hundred feet. Excuse me, of the subject property were notified of the zone change and a meeting was held on August the thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Ten property uh, owners attended the meeting and four provided comments in writing. The applicant reports that about half of those inten- attendees favored the project and they didn't have any concerns at all with it. Uh, there were some concerns expressed and those were about drainage runoff, uh, traffic, APS access. Increased taxes and prairie dogs displaced by the project. Uh, it, it appears, uh, at least from the applicant's point of view, that some of these concerns are based on the misconception that this was a subdivision. And not just a simple four lot split overall. Concerns about drainage had a lot to do with Deer Farm Road and drainage along that and that's not really the applicants concerned either. That's, that's uh, that concerns the county as does taxes uh, in this area, of course, property taxes. Uh, prairie dogs are not generally thought to be in this area. I, I have not been out here to confirm that. But the applicant indicated there aren't really prairie dogs in this area and they might have been uh, they might have been mistaken. For gophers in the area, so um, APS does have, they, they have a power line along the road at the bottom. But they would obviously be able to continue to access that power line within the easement. And of course, with the zone change, you would get three additional parcels. They already have one, so that would not uh, have a huge impact on traffic. And uh, commissioners brought up this, uh, as they should, access and traffic. Previously, our Public Works Department had indicated that there should be a traffic statement required in this case. And uh, and only one access off of Deer Farm Road. However, as I talked to them further, I think there was some mistake, they were mistaken that they felt that this could create more density. That it might possibly be a multifamily zoning. Uh, I think we understand, you know, county, county planning staff and the commissioners understand that the, the county is a really rural county. Uh, and uh. In the end, we basically determined that whatever kind of access is off of Deer Farm Road. Uh, that would be provided to the lots created by this zone change. Uh, would just have to fall under the standards of the Engineering Design and Construction Manual, the EDCM. So uh, whenever they built houses, any kind of houses on here, they would have to get encroachment permits. So they could connect to this county maintained road and whatever standards that, that are, would be applied for that, that would be applied. Um, I typically don't like to put conditions on zone changes like this if I, if, if we don't have to, if they're not necessary. So we left any conditions off. Uh, and of course, a traffic statement wouldn't be required either. These are the findings for a zone change and I've addressed. These are the findings for a zone change and I've addressed each of them in the staff report. And this is some staff analysis. Basically, the zone change would apply, would provide additional housing, or I believe in the conference of plan, it says a variety of different types of housing. So it's consistent with that. It would only allow for three additional parcels and that would not affect the health, safety, comfort, convenience or welfare of nearby residents. And it's also a very appropriate type of lot for this area. In fact, the housing development on the west side and the commercial development on the right side of this property, whether the west and east, would be much more intense than these large lot parcels. So it would fit very well within this neighborhood. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards the recommendation of approval of ZC twenty three zero zero two to the Board of Supervisors. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
All right, this is Chair Ontiveris. Mr. Short, I do not see any hands raised from the commissioners. So I am going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, I would ask that you please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have received a copy of the staff report and if you what your thoughts are on that. All right, it looks like David and it looks like the applicants are here. So if you would please state your name and address for the record and address the commission.
This is David and Barbara Harton. We we have, oh, address sixty eight hundred West Bell Springs in Flagstaff. And we have received a copy of the commission report. And we are basically in agreement with everything in there.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time. If so, please raise your hand. I am not seeing any hands raised by the commissioners. So at this point, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, would you please raise your hand? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone in the public. So with that, I'm going to close it on to, and I will say that you, to the applicant, you can go ahead and mute again. I'm going to move it to commission discussion for the time being. So, thank you. All right, we are open at commission discussion. So Commissioner Williams, will you please start us off this evening? I think you're muted, Commissioner Williams.
Oh, what's, uh, thank you. I can make the findings for this split, so I don't have any problems with it.
Okay, Commissioner Tohe?
Good evening. I also can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
I would have to say that Mr. Short has done quite well with this and I concur with the lack of conditions. Don't need a conditional zone change for this one and I can make the findings for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Best?
I can also make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Chair Ontiveris and I am very familiar with this area. And I will tell you that this, honestly, when we have got, come to zone changes, this is one of the most appropriate ones that I have seen. It it fits perfectly with that neighborhood, in my opinion. So with that, I can make all of the findings necessary. So at this point, I will accept a motion and a second, please, for for a recommendation of approval to the recommendation for approval to the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chair, I would like to recommend we forward ZZ, ZC two three dash zero zero two to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
I'll second.
Madam Chair, I second this.
Okay, Commissioner Walsh, Vice Chair Burton beat you to the second. So with that, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Vice Chair Burton to send a recommendation to the board for approval of ZC two three zero zero two. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
This is Chair Ontiveris. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is CUP two four zero zero two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Bob's getting his screen shared here. This is a conditional use permit request. Actually, it's a renewal and modification of a community service agency camp for Camp Colton in Hart Prairie. Actually, I'll give credit to Zach Schwartz for having done the analysis and the and the report on this case, but Zach couldn't be with us this evening. He's got a family issue to take care of. So Bob will be presenting this and go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. McNilly. Thank you, Madam Chair and commissioners. This case is, as we said, Camp Colton renewal and expansion. It was originally a request for a, an expansion of the case and we decided that it would be appropriate to go ahead and renew it as as well. So in this case, the applicant is Ari Wilder, Flagstaff, Arizona. The property owner is the Flagstaff Unified School District. That's known as FUSD. A Flagstaff property location is on, is at thirteen zero five zero Hart Prairie Road. That's also known as, I believe, Forest Road one fifty one. And that's just west of the San Francisco Peaks. Parcel size, the two parcels is thirty three point oh three acres. The zoning is general and the request is renewal and modification of a CUP for a community service agency camp. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject, excuse me, a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see Arizona Snowball here in the San Francisco Peaks, Coquignino National Forest, Port Valley, Highway one eighty as it goes up to Valley. And this is where the nature conservancy is located, one fifty one or Hart Prairie Road runs right through here. And these are the two subject properties. And this is an aerial photo of the subject property. This is the primary, the property where all the development is. This property is just used for a few activities like archery, for example. And this is a photo, a photograph of the old cabin on the property. It's been there for a long time and that will will remain. And this is some development on the property. It looks like a fire pit and maybe a little place to sit around the fire, maybe have some talks. And this is the the other property to the west that is mostly undeveloped, just used for some activities. Yeah, this is the background history on the, on this particular property. The CUP is originally approved in nineteen seventy and I'm not sure if that was for a different use. The applicant indicated that it was seventy six, but it was a long time ago. So it's been there for a while. It was renewed in ninety six and in two thousand and eleven. It's currently set to expire in twenty twenty six. I wanted to note that this is a community service agency camp. It's not a commercial campground. So this only known as section three point eight, which applies to campgrounds, does not apply in this case. The CUP is based on the master plan. So whatever's on the master plan, that's what they're allowed to develop. In this case, the community agent, the community service agency camp can only be run by a nonprofit. This is, of course, owned by, owned and operated by the Flagstaff Unified School District. It is an environmental education camp where students learn about ecology. It operates approximately a hundred and thirty days out of the year. It serves students from all over northern, excuse me, all other, all over northern Arizona, but primarily just Flagstaff School District. It serves up to a hundred students a day and thirty staff for a total of a hundred and thirty people at one time. It provides classes for first and second grade students. Sixth graders stay on site for four days. They do that in the fall. I know my daughter did that at one point and probably a lot of, you know, people who have done that as well. And then it also has summer camps for seventh and eighth graders over a six day periods. So these are the proposed modifications. The biggest, most important one is a sixty five hundred square foot lodge and that would include quarters for four staff members, three offices, a great hall and a nurse's office and various storage and porches. And another new building would be a new bath house. There would be archery, outdoor activities on the eastern parcel that is new and fourteen new cabins. The existing development to be removed is our tent platforms. There are thirteen tent platforms that were used there for many, many years for, you know, tents and for students to stay in. The existing development to stay would be the existing lodge and two existing cabins on the site and the two existing bath houses. The operation, basically, this stayed the same. It wouldn't have the same maximum number of people. That would not change. So this is the site plan showing that. You can see down here in red. Red is basically things to be removed. And so all these thirteen of these would be removed. These cabins would remain. These restroom facilities would remain. They would add in this, this astronomy plaza. This is the location of the new lodge. And they would, they would be adding the cabins in this location right here. It also includes a new parking lot and some new roadways into the, into the parcel that would be more well developed. They'd have the compact surfaces, all weather surfaces to support public safety vehicles. It'd just be overall a better, you know, better roads than they had before. If you've been up there, it's a really rough road to go up Hart Prairie Road. And this is the future archery area on the parcel to the east. This is, this shows some of the materials and colors for the new building and it shows a little bit of some elevations for the new building as well. The new lodge posed on the site. So you can tell that they are very nice, very appropriate materials for this location, something that would blend into the site. And this is the new lodge renderings. And I believe this is from the south side. And this would be from the north side. This is a floor plan, basically a lot of offices, nurse's office, a great hall and some storage and some other, other offices and the kitchen, et cetera. In terms of fire safety and emergency services, this particular parcel's not in a fire district. It is something that Summit Fire is, I think Summit Fire is the closest, so they can certainly access it. They have indicated that they would be able to respond to fires and Guardian Medical would also be able to respond to medical emergencies. They have created a fire safety and emergency plan for the property and that that plan includes incident command system, mitigation and response. They would have onsite medical staff. You saw the nurse's office on the, on the, on the plans and also an evacuation plan. In terms of citizen participation, we notified property owners within three quarters of a mile, or in this case, the applicant did. And they were invited to a meeting and that was held on January the eighteenth, twenty twenty four. This is a meeting because this is kind of a difficult place to get to sometimes. They also invited for a service leadership. It looks like no one attended the meeting, but they did get three comments and all the comments were positive and supported and there were no concerns expressed. Obviously, this has been there for a long time. It's a very good use of the, of the land, very good for students. These are the findings of fact for a CUP. Those have been addressed in the staff report. And these are some staff considerations. This is obviously a historic use. It's been there for a long time. It's not becoming substantially more intense than it was. The new structures are very appropriate for the natural surroundings. They look very, they look very good and they fit very well to the forest setting. Ecology education is supported by the comprehensive plan. And fire and emergency services are available for the site. And the applicant is working with the National Forest to update access permits that the access is off Forest Road one fifty one, Hart Prairie Road. So they need to work with the Forest Service on that. They did not move the location of that access as they had previously wanted to do. They have kept it in the same place and they are working with the Forest on that. And I did want to mention that approval would renew the CUP without the need for future renewal. So as you know, it has been staff's policy to recommend that the commission apply a perpetual renewal that doesn't have to be renewed in the future. We don't really see any reason for that at this point. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty four zero zero two with the recommended conditions. And with that, I'll answer any commission questions.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Short, it appears there'll be a significantly larger amount of wastewater being generated as a result of these improvements. How will that be addressed?
Commissioner Wilson, whenever you have a new use on a property, they do have to get a permit from our environmental quality division. So that will need to be, they, they, they will need to, to put in, probably improve their wastewater system substantially in order to handle this new use. It's quite a bit different. As you, as you can see, it's quite a bit different.
So they're currently on probably a standard septic? Is that correct?
I'm not exactly sure what they are. I believe that, I believe that is correct. But the way the process goes with the county is they get approval for a conditional use permit and then they get a building permit for this building and for the other buildings on the property. And as that building permit goes through the process, environmental quality is part of that. They have to get a permit for environmental quality to make sure that, they make sure that it is has the right capacity for, for whatever's being proposed. This is, this is quite significant, of course.
Okay, the access to this facility with, for the students, are they transported back and forth by school bus typically?
Yes, that is my understanding is that they are, they do use buses.
Because it doesn't look like there's any parking sufficient to accommodate buses.
I think it might be right in here.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Is dust control an issue at all with? Is dust control an issue at all with respect to buses traveling up and down that road?
I, that would be something that the applicant would work with the Forest Service on if there was a, if there was a dust control issue. I don't know if you've been up one fifty one, but it is, it's a pretty rough road in some places. So hopefully they have a pretty good buses that will get up there. But that's something that they would need to work with the Forest Service on since it is a Forest Service road.
I, I wouldn't want to be those bus drivers. And finally, oftentimes for commercial camping facilities, we require a fire safety plan. That includes things like onsite, you know, ability to combat a small fire before offsite services might be able to respond. Would that make sense in this scenario?
Uh, yes, that would. And I, I'm pretty sure, I think, I don't know if I covered it in here. But my understanding is they definitely have people onsite that, that could uh, you know, that would have facilities to, to fight a fire before. Cause it's a long ways up here, as you know, from Summit. It
Well, that's my concern, yeah.
To get up here. So that's
Call nine one one, it's gonna be a long time before fire can get up that road and help them out. Um, and with the way we've seen fires spread recently, uh, that, that immediate response is the most important one. Is, is there any requirement whatsoever for that? Or is, is it just Summit Fires agreed to respond and we're okay with that?
No, Summit Fire has, has, uh, has looked at their plan and helped them develop a plan. And I can, uh, we can talk, we can ask the applicant for more information about that. But they have developed a plan and they have approved that plan. Let's see if I have that.
Hey Bob, there's a, there's a fire and emergency services plan in the packet.
Right, exactly.
On page, the fire and emergency services
Right, I, I saw it signed.
Seventy three.
Yeah, I saw the chief has signed a plan that says they agree, we'll, we'll respond if necessary and, and accept that responsibility. Um, my concern is, is onsite. Um, it, it, you know, if, if you call nine one one, it's gonna be thirty minutes before anybody from Summit is gonna be onsite. And thirty minutes, we know now in this area with the forest, the way that it is, is long enough for something to, to get to the point where it can't be controlled anymore.
Uh, Commissioner Wilson's, yeah, certainly. So we understand that. That is, that is definitely a priority. And I, I think Summit is, Summit is very much involved with this and understand what is needed on the site to make sure that, uh, that fires don't get out of hand. Obviously this is operated up here for a long time. Uh, so that, that is probably utmost importance is that they have a good fire and emergency services plan as I kind of laid out here and as also is attached to the staff report.
So the fact that they've operated for a long time either means it's very unlikely or every day gets more likely that we'll have a fire.
I don't know if I can, if I can answer that exactly.
I, I'll wait and, and I'd like to hear from the applicant on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, um, this is Chair Auntie Verris and, um, I'm actually scrolling through my, my packet. I have the written one in front of me and I'm looking at page five. Where it talks about fire safety and emergency services. The second sentence says, "The detailed fire and emergency services plan, see attached, includes an incident command system, prevention, mitigation and response. Details about onsite medical staff to be onsite whenever campers are present and an evacuation plan." Um, does that, uh, Commissioner Wilson, does that answer your question, the attachment of that? Or the attached statement that, that is being referenced in that paragraph entitled Fire Safety and Emergency Services?
Could you refer me again to the page number that you're at? Because I'm looking at the fire, the Summit Fire letter.
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm actually on page seven of the staff report. Excuse me, I'm on page five of seven of the staff report. The second paragraph that is titled Fire Safety and Emergency Services. The second sentence there on refers to a detailed fire and emergency services plan. Do you see the attachment?
See, the page numbers I'm looking at, I'm looking at in the package are, you know, forty four, forty five, forty six. These are photographs. Um, so perhaps we're looking at two different documents and so that, okay, fire merge service.
It's in one of the
See, yeah, so it says see attached. Is, is attached included following this or not?
Okay, if you, okay, I am looking, I
I did find what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's on. Uh, I'm scrolling through this. I'm looking at the online presentation. It shows that it's on page seventy three of eighty seven. And it's actually titled Fire Protection Plan. And it is on page seventy three, seventy four, uh, seventy five, seventy six, seventy seven. So it's on pages seventy three through seventy seven. It's a pretty detailed fire protection plan.
And I should have seen that.
You can see it on the screen right now, right?
Okay, um. Does it address any onsite actual firefighting capability though? I guess is my question. Um, is there anything onsite that's required by this to address, you know, that who knows what an arrow struck a rock and caused a spark and started a fire? That, you know, hasn't ever happened before, but you know, we, we just can't afford any more fires in, in this ecosystem here. It, it, so I, I'm concerned about how isolated this area is, the number of people that will be there, the potential for some unexpected event to create that spark that that eliminates the rest of the trees on our mountain.
Uh, you can see it on, you can see it on the screen, some of the things that it's addressing, but uh, I think, I think the applicant is going to be able to explain this better. You know, we could read, read through this whole thing right now. But you, you can, you can tell that it's pretty detailed. There's quite a bit in here. Uh, Camp Colton actively engages fireworks.
I, I will, I will suspend my questions and, and, and ask that the applicant describe to us how they would address the, the identification and then initial response to a fire that started on their property um before we could get Summit Fire on scene. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Best.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I uh, support Commissioner Wilson's questions a hundred percent. And if we spend two hours talking about fire, I'd be perfectly happy. I, I am, I'm gonna look at it from a different point of view. I am going to imagine there are a hundred and thirty of our kids there. And suddenly they smell smoke. And they don't know where it's coming from. You know, it's a May day. It's gusting to thirty five miles an hour. It's dry. And we know what fire can do in those conditions unbelievably quickly. So my first question is, is there evacuation north and south? Uh, obviously there's evacuation south. Can, can you get out Hart Prairie Road to the north?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so, um, and I, and I'm sure the applicant uh will want to speak about this as well. How would you know which way to go? Uh, I wonder if there is a fire tower close enough to pinpoint the source of the flames because it could be one way leads you to uh escape and the other leads you into the jaws of fire. And this can happen so quickly as we know that uh, it's really critical that there'd be good coordination between, I'm guessing the Forest Service and the administration onsite. Um, I'm just thinking of all the things in the world, you know, could we have a drone? Do they have a drone? You know, maybe, maybe that wouldn't work in thirty five mile an hour winds. But uh, we know what can happen and we want to be darn sure that it doesn't. And, and they have a very, uh, very impressive plan. But still, I, I feel like it's a good idea that we all take a shot at it. So there's a question, which way do you go, north or south? And how do you know when one could take you to safety and the other to disaster?
Wish your best. If I could interrupt for just one second, I will tell you, there's someone who has manned the Kendrick Fire Tower um in the past. That area is in, is visible to the Kendrick Fire Tower.
Okay, great.
And, and they would be able to isolate, you know, the specific location of which way the, where the fire was specifically and what the expected evacuation route would be best.
So there is something for the applicant to work out with the Forest Service to make sure that in the event of, oh my God, I smell smoke, that immediately there's a communication link. So that's one thing to do and I'm glad we figured that out. Um, another thing is uh that we have in the past required uh some campgrounds that we felt were um very vulnerable to fire. Uh, either as a danger to the campground or as a danger from the campground to the rest of the forest. We've required that they have an ATV with a tank and a pump. Uh, and personnel to operate that at all times. And, and that to me, um, I, I read through the, the, the fire section of the application. And it seems like it's, uh, it's hand um, based, based on hand tools and hand pumps. But an ATV with maybe a hundred or two hundred gallons is a whole different level. And that of course would, might just on that scary May day, might only, you know, you might have five minutes to get that onsite before that would be overwhelmed. But I think that might be a reasonable uh request of the applicant. Um, one question is, is there phone service up there? So that off campus hikes, uh hikers and their, uh, and their staff members can be in contact at all times. Uh, because of course, if you're evacuating, you want to make sure you got everybody with you. And I, I think there is phone service because when I go skiing there, it's pretty decent service. Um, and I would uh, I would suggest to the applicant, I don't know if we want to do a condition that we have the uh, the normal condition that we put for campgrounds, that we have a Forest Service Fire Danger Level sign that's kept up to date. And I think that would help people to be aware and it's, it's a good educational tool as well. So fire is my main concern. Uh, full disclosure, I donate to the uh Camp Colton. Uh, a hundred percent support it, but uh, if, if anybody's got any other ideas about fire, I think we should hear them because that to me is, is the biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Uh, Commissioner Tovey.
Again, uh, I have some questions regarding the permit itself. Um, first of all, to just being new to um P and Z, is this um normal for a permit to be renewed two years ahead of time? Um, and then also, um, is it just because it's due to the expansion um request that's gonna follow? And then third, did I hear that there will, this, because of this renewal, there'll be no future, no need for future renewals? Um, I'm concerned that is there, is this gonna set a precedent? Um, and what about if um Camp Colton decides to go out of business, does this no future renewal transfer to no, to the new owners if there should be any? Um, so I'm just concerned about that. Um, basically just wanting to know more details on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Tovey, um, the zoning ordinance under conditional use permits does not require a term for conditional use permits. And that is something that has been a tradition at the county for a long time to require that, that all of them, most of them at least, I think pretty much all of them have a term. So every five, ten years uh they come back to you. This is not really common. It's something that has happened at the county. Uh, this has been, you know, this camp's been in operation since nineteen seventy. And there really hasn't been a lot of changes before this. Uh, so in these cases where it, it almost seems, it becomes kind of a redundant thing that uh conditional use permits come back and, and are renewed every five or ten years, sometimes longer. Uh, but uh, that has been something that staff has uh over the last several years or last few years determined that was not really necessary. I think in, in some cases, you know, we've even had cell towers. This is not a cell tower, obviously. We've had cell towers that come back every five years. And uh, we did not see that as necessary. This, this camp is operated. It's operated well. We've gone back. We've looked at, you know, every time uh conditional use permit expires, that we go back and we look at it and everything's been operating very well. So that is something that the, that the county has, has uh, that staff has recommended to the commission. The commission has pretty much agreed with it and, and approved those without a new expiration date. Um, in this case, this is a community service agency camp. It's required to be a nonprofit. Uh, so uh, if, if they did go out of business, they could pass it on to someone else. If it is another nonprofit, I think. Uh, I can't, I, I can't uh imagine that happening. But that is certainly something that they could happen. They do, they do, they do go with the land. They don't go with the owner of the land. Um, and what was your last question?
Um, let's see. There were a transfer. I guess just setting the precedent.
Yeah, that, so we have kind of uh, that has been a, like I said, a new policy from staff's point of view and something the commission has, they have, uh, they have approved these. We call them perpetual. If they don't have a term, that's a kind of a term we use, is that they don't have to come back and get renewed again. So after this happens several times, um, I think it kind of gets redundant and it, it really isn't necessary. And it, it becomes kind of a burden to the uh, the holders of the conditional uses. If it, in some cases, we don't do that, like for example, if it's a uh cottage industry, like a, something in a residential area, then we, we often don't. But the commission, if the commission feels like uh they want this to not be perpetual uh, and to have an expiration, then we can certainly, you know, put that, we can, they can, you can certainly do that. Um, in this case, and I will tell you, so in this case, if for example, they didn't have an expiration date, uh, they are, at that point, they can only do what was approved in their original conditional use permit. So for example, if back in nineteen, even back in seventy six, if uh Camp Colton did, did not have an expiration date and they had operated over all these years and decades uh, without ever, you know, ever having to do a renewal. Once they, you come back with additional things that you're adding to the site, then you would have to get a new conditional use permit anyway. So this would have required a new conditional use permit, as this is actually a new conditional use permit. Does that answer all your questions?
Most of it. Can you explain the transfer? Is, is there a possibility of a transfer? If for some reason something happens and they decide not to do Camp Colton anymore? Um, just the transfer part to another. You said that if it's a nonprofit, then it's, it could be transferable and the no future renewals stays intact?
Yeah, I can't Yeah, I can't see that happening. I mean, it could happen, certainly. So what the zoning ordinance says about conditional use permits is that they run with the land. That means any kind of conditional use permit that you have, it could be a cell tower, it could be a Cottage Industry, it could be many things. They don't expire because someone sells the property. So a conditional use permit would run with the land. And in this case, if Flagstaff Unified School District decided to sell the property, they would have to sell it to another nonprofit because these community service agency camps must be run by a nonprofit. They cannot be run for profit. So that could certainly happen. And I do now remember one of your other questions. If the camp is not operated for two years, the zoning ordinance indicates that if a conditional use permit, the uses, if they do not, if that particular use does not operate for two years, then it automatically expires. So it's only for active uses. It's not for something, if it does not operate for two years in a row.
Okay, but it's not, but it's normal for them to be renewed to, like, two years earlier?
In this case, so as I said before, if you go into the zoning ordinance and look at conditional use permits, there is no requirement at all that they expire.
Okay.
So we feel, in this case, that it's operated long enough since the nineteen seventies that there's not really a reason for them to come back and get a renewal once it's approved.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm concerned about it is because, and I think Camp Colton is a great organization. All three of my sons have gone through it, through their activities. And they really liked what happened there with their learning experience. The reason why I'm concerned about it is because I'm looking out for and trying to make sure that the voices of indigenous people are put through here because of another entity that's up there operating. And so I want to just make clear that there should be a mechanism for permits, especially when it says no future renewals. That's kind of something that is concerning to all indigenous nations in the area.
What type of permit would you be referring to?
Just any, especially permits that are up on the mountain.
Like the Nature Conservancy or something like that?
No, well, I'm just I'm just concerned about the no future renewal on permits. That somebody doesn't need to come back for something. And especially when something happens and they're not operating in that same thing again, in that same service. And someone else takes over it, takes it over and is being utilized in a way that is contrary to indigenous nations.
Okay, and you have to
That's all I wanted to say.
This is Chair Ontiveris, and I think it is important to add this information in here. Because I know that Commissioner Tohe did express that she is new to the commission. Commissioner Tohe, as Mr. Short has explained, the conditional use permit runs with the land, but so do the conditions contained in the conditional use permit. So if you look at the staff recommendation where it lists the seven conditions there, those conditions also run with this permit. And it mentions in here that, let's see. Any substantial changes, this is condition number one. Any substantial changes or expansions shall require approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that condition number one would address the concerns that I'm hearing from you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was exactly what I was going to explain. The conditions continue. Whenever there's a perpetual renewal, the conditions are still a part of this particular use, this conditional use permit. It's still a conditional use permit and the conditions of approval and everything else that's approved with this, including all the documentation, the, you know, the fire protection plan, the site plan, the narrative, everything is part of it and that continues to apply. So if they do not follow the conditions, if they do something that's not approved, then that is still a zoning compliance issue.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. I do see that now that I see this recommendation. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe.
Commissioner Best, I see your hand still raised, but I think that that's just left over, right?
Well, I know I'm guilty of that, but in this case, I didn't take it down for about ten, I did take it down for about ten seconds and put it back up.
You're good, go ahead.
I want to support Commissioner Tohe's point of view to a certain extent. And I know in recent years, I mean, the permanent the permanent CUP is relatively new in my experience. And I see the efficacy of it when we have a responsible applicant who does the right thing, comes back year after year and has to pay you know, three, four hundred bucks. But I would point out that without renewal, we do not have a mechanism in the county for checking up on people. We operate by complaint. But if there are no complaints, nobody is really checking to see if conditions are met. And in this case, I think we have a very responsible applicant and I'm very comfortable with this. But, you know, theoretically, they could, you know, two years from now start ignoring all of these safety issues. And no one would ever know. So I would just point that out to everyone, the rest of the commission. That just remember, unless you want to go out and check on things, nobody's going to do that. And unless a neighbor complains, nobody really knows what's going on. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. I'm not seeing any other hands raised for questions to staff. So with that, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening? If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have received the staff report, read it, and agree with the conditions.
Hi, yes, this is Ari Wilder. I am speaking on behalf of 13050 Hart Prairie Road, what we've been calling Camp Colton. I appreciate the spirited conversation tonight and I appreciate the work of the staff who've been wonderful. I sent a message to Zach. I have received the staff report. There is one change that I noted in an email to him that's relatively minor, but the old bathhouses, we are hoping to remove once we have the new bathhouse built. We're really trying to keep our touch on the land as light as possible. So to get rid of structures that are old and not functional and, you know, do ecological restoration to those areas. So the blue circle, the existing restroom facilities, those will go away once we have a new bathhouse. Just wanted to add that.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Oh, no, then I was gonna say, I'm happy to respond. There's a lot of other things, but I'll try to respond to those as well.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and respond to what you've heard? Or do you want me to open it up for questions?
I can respond to a couple of things and then maybe people can follow up with questions if that works for everyone.
I think that works great. Why don't you go ahead?
So Commissioner Tohe, I really appreciate what you said and it's something that I have explored as well because, for various reasons, you know, where did this land come from? How did it come to belong to FUSD? So I would just like to share with you, it is deeded to FUSD, which means that they are never allowed to sell it. And in the deed, which is only a few sentences long, if they choose to stop using it for educational purposes, it goes to NAU. There is no other information after that. Because I have a lawyer on my board, I talked to a lawyer briefly. They said that most likely if NAU did not want the property, it would revert back to the family, whichever surviving family members are that originally deeded it to the school district. So I don't know if that makes you feel better or worse, but I do think it's good, you know, to know about this land. One of the big things is that, you know, FUSD, part of the money for this plan is coming from a school bond, which are public dollars. And I think, you know, FUSD was rightly concerned, like, would there be any way to ever get that investment back? And the answer is no. The investment is just in future educational experiences for kids, not in any way that they could ever, you know, profit or land swap or do anything like that with it. So hopefully that answered that question or at least gave you some more information. Yes, we have phone service. Yes, staff all have phones. If they don't have phones, we have walkie-talkies, they're in contact at all times. Yes, we have a very close relationship with the Forest Service and with the City of Flagstaff Fire Department. We have many people and ways to call and stay in touch if one thing, you know, if we're not getting an answer in one way. We actually, I happened to be up at camp when we had to do, we had a rental and we had to do, we had to evacuate the property and it was a bunch of people in their trailers. And it went very smoothly and well. But yes, you are absolutely right that it's vital that we know which direction to go on Forest Road 151. And then even off of 151, there's other roads that you can take down. So there's actually multiple ways to get out, which is good. I will say that this property is remote. That's one of the things that makes it so special and such a special place for kids to be. Fire is of gravest concern for us. Regularly, when we go up to camp, we are calling and reporting fires that we see along Forest Road 151 of campers. And that's probably our biggest concern because that's the likely direction that fire would move up the mountain. So we, you know, work with our neighbors to employ firewise practices, to do thinning, to keep, you know, it's clean and tidy, underbrushed, pine needles are raked up. It is, you know, we do all of the things that we can, living basically in a forest to keep, you know, to prevent catastrophic wildfire. Obviously, that, you know, I appreciate that those are everyone's concerns because those are our concerns as well. We do not have in our plans, any plan to have onsite water pump on an ATV firefighting. As someone correctly noted, it's manual. It's fire extinguishers and shovels and buckets of water. The activities that we're most concerned about, obviously, are when we have actual fires in established fire rings. But we are always on fire alert when we are up at camp. Staff are trained in noticing fire, in being aware of signs of smoke and how to respond. And one of the reasons that we're excited about this new plan is that the roads that we'll have onsite will be better for emergency vehicles once they get there. But also that we will be able to have the school buses parked in a way that's much easier and more efficient to evacuate students if that's what we need to do. And I will be, you know, apart from really trying to manage our onsite activities to prevent, you know, us ever starting a forest fire, which I think, again, we're completely off-grid. We do a pretty good job of that. Most things that would start a fire occur inside. And then, you know, our plan is really to evacuate. So I don't know if I really answered all the questions, but I'll take questions now.
Chair Ontiveris, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton. I was talking away. Commissioner Tohe, your hand was raised first. You're going to go ahead and start, then we'll move to Commissioner Best and Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you again. Ari, I wanted to say thank you so much for that explanation that you gave about the land. I really appreciate that, all the things that you do up there with our children. And that makes me feel better. And I know that you and your staff really do a good job in protecting in protecting the way that you educate, but also in the way that you take care of the land and being up there, especially with those young lives. I really appreciate, and I know that culturally speaking, that really blesses the land to the children learning about the earth and the things that are that are very special and significant up there. So I appreciate that, Ari. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rose. That is very kind of you. And yes, we are always trying to be better stewards and to be more inclusive. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think this is a wonderful application, you know, over the last three or four years since COVID started and we started having a campground a month applying to us. We've tried to include some educational elements to our campground conditions. And here you are, a campground that does nothing but education. So that makes me smile. But as you drive out 89 and look to the left, you see what's going to happen. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when the forest up there is going to burn and whether we have been smart enough to put the forest back in the condition it's supposed to be in so that burns are restorative instead of fatal to the forest. So with that in mind, do you have a way to contact the Kendrick Fire Tower? Or will you check that out? Because you might have really just a few minutes to figure out which way to go, left or right.
We don't, but we can certainly work out that relationship with the Forest Service. I'd also like to point out, I mean, there's so many different pieces to this, but typically the when, we don't like to have a hundred and thirty people up at camp at once. And I want to be clear, like, I'm a very, I love what Commissioner Best said about, like, no one's checking on this. I am a very honest person. And so I have done everything to the maximum that would ever be. We don't like having that many kids up there at once. We think it diminishes the experience. On rare occasions, it's required because of scheduling and busing and various things, but that's not our ideal number. Our ideal number is sixty to eighty. And often much less than that. And during the peak of fire season, camp is not operational. You know, we offer a few summer programs. Many of our summer programs are very small. We also, you know, our staff is so intense during, you know, basically April and May and then mid-August through October. And we don't anticipate that really changing. If we can expand our numbers a little bit, we'll be expanding into October, which typically is not high fire season. So I'd also like to point out, I mean, when the forests are closed, we don't do anything at camp. Because camp is not just kids coming to camp. Camp is kids coming to camp and going out into the Coquenino National Forest. So when the forest is closed, we don't do anything up at camp. So I would just like to point that out, that like, fire, at the peak of fire season and at the peak of fire danger, there aren't programs happening at camp.
Great, that's good to know. And I guess I had a, you know, that answers my question about whether you're following the Forest Service campfire restrictions.
Oh, yes.
You are because you're not there.
Yes, exactly.
I am going to suggest that we make a condition that, that you provide an ATV with a tank and a pump and have somebody there who has been checked out to operate it. Because I think that takes you to the next level of, you know, that first five minutes when a fire on a windy, hot, dry day can be potentially manageable. And we'll see if the other commissioners agree with that. I think those are the only questions I haven't, haven't been resolved. Oh, do you have a weed management plan?
We do. So we have, like, an invasive weed, like, we, I don't, we weed, we remove invasive weeds, we weed whack in areas where, like, areas that need to be cleared. That's about, that's about it for the plan. But like I said, our plan, as we have these spaces that formerly had buildings that don't, will be to do some ecological restoration. So making sure that we're encouraging native things to grow back.
Yeah, and that's also another great learning experience for the kids to, to
Yes, manual
hear the story of invasive plants and what we can do. All right, great. Well, thanks for what you do, Ari.
Thanks, Saat. I still don't have your key, but yes, thank you. I was waiting for you to bring that up.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I suspect on behalf of the rest of the commissioners and myself, Camp Colton's amazing thing. It's so awesome that it exists and that the kids in this area have an opportunity to experience something like this because I'm sure to many of them, it's something that affects them for the rest of their life. So it's super important. I heard the applicant mentioned something about a bunch of people in their trailers had to evacuate very quickly. And I didn't understand what the trailers part of this meant. Could you expound on that?
Oh, yes. So we also have small rental groups. So we had an adult music camp that was up there. And currently, the platform canvas tents are not super nice. And so a couple of people had trailers up there that they were sleeping in instead of tents. And so that was the group that I had to evacuate.
Okay. I guess that might raise some more questions, but we'll, we'll just kind of move on from there. I support Commissioner Best's idea that there needs to be more than just a manual buckets and shovels response to a potential fire for your own personal safety and for the safety of, of the mountain that we all appreciate so much. So I would, I would support that condition. Is there any improvements in your abilities here for ADA access as a result of these new changes that are coming in?
Yes, that is such a good question. Yes, all of this is being built. Because, so I would also ask all of you to remember, this is a school site technically. So the fire, the fire safety is all overseen by the Arizona Fire Marshal. So that is who tells us about safety on this site for fire, at least they're the final word on fire safety. All of the new construction will be ADA compliant and hopefully even, you know, better than compliant. Right now, the lodge is, you know, has stairs and has lips in it. And the, we did build two, the only two improvements we've done are kind of handicap accessible cabins. So we do have those, but other than that, nothing in the site was conceived to be ADA. So the trails, you can see some of the trails kind of meander. The reason that the trails are meandering is so they are, you could have a wheelchair on them because the grade is somewhat steep. So the trails are going to meander so that you can actually move a wheelchair up the trails in addition to the structures all being accessible.
That's great. I'm really happy to hear that. With respect to contact with Kendrick, which is one of the things that was mentioned earlier, I would suggest that a radio, you know, one of the two-way radios that Kendrick uses to report fires would be the best way and keep you guys in contact with everyone else around the area reporting fires. There is a specific frequency. That might be a really good thing to consider, having in some kind of a common space that somebody's kind of listening to and monitoring, so that you would be alerted as soon as possible if there were some kind of a risk. And then the last thing, you mentioned that during the peak fire season, Colton isn't typically used a lot. But the, you know, the tunnel fire started on April 19th. Not typically what's considered to be peak fire season, but we know what the results of that were. So I wouldn't put too much, I wouldn't invest too strongly in the fact that you're not in peak fire season because I don't know that there is a peak versus non-peak fire season anymore. As a result of our forest health, it's, I don't know that we have those anymore. So I would encourage you kind of maybe look at it from a slightly different perspective. But thank you very much for all the hard work I'm sure everybody does up there and the amazing experiences you provide to all the people that get to attend.
I couldn't agree with you more. We, and we don't rest on our laurels where fires are concerned. I just wanted to be clear that when the forests are closed, we are not, there are no kids up at Camp Colton. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson and Ms. Wilder. Ms. Wilder, this is Chair Antiveris, and I wanted to ask you, at this point, you have heard Commissioner Best, Best's suggestion of the ATV with water tank and firefighting capability. Can you, what are your thoughts on that? And I just want to tell you, be honest in your thoughts. I just want you to be really honest. Don't, don't tell us what you think we want to hear. Just be honest.
No, I mean, many of you know, I come from an educational background. These are the kinds of things that I worry about, and I appreciate that these are the kinds of things you worry about. If there are things we can be doing onsite to make it safer with regard to fires, within reason, I want to be doing them. I just want to make sure that what we're investing in is what, for example, Summit Fire District or the National Forest or the Arizona Fire Marshal. Like, I just want to make sure that what we're doing is what's actually the, you know, the best use of resources and the most likely to be, to increase safety. And if it is an ATV with a tank and a pump, I'm all for it. I just would want respectfully to talk to a few more fire experts who know this site really well and have them suggest what those things should be.
Okay, understood. I appreciate your, your response. I'm now going to ask if there are any other commissioners that have questions from Ms. Wilder this evening? Not seeing any hands raised, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Not seeing any, I'm going to close it to the public and open it at Commission Discussion. Commissioner Williams, would you please start our discussion?
Okay. Excuse me. I think Commissioner Best's suggestion in regards to fire prevention of adding another higher level, like the ATV with a water tank and a pump, or as the applicant says, whatever maybe is the best suggestion by the fire professionals would be completely appropriate condition to add to this. And other than that, I'm favorable towards everything.
Okay, and that includes the perpetual run of this conditional use permit?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Tohe?
I also make the findings, and I also agree with what's up here for number seven. But I agree with the side of where the applicant is, will be doing more research and depending on the fire experts as to what's best for the area.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Tohe. Mr. Short, while we're running through this, if you could think of some verbiage that would take the applicant's concerns into account in Condition Seven, I'd appreciate it. With that, Vice Chair Burton, you're up.
I mean, I can make all the findings. I, I don't know that we need to word number seven the way it's worded. I think just, you know, additional communication with the fire marshal and appropriate, what's the word I'm looking for? Units for potential additional measures for, for fire prevention or fire suppression, I think would be sufficient. I don't think we have to flat out say, oh, you need an OHV or similar equipment. I think just making a plan with, with the appropriate units for potential additional fire suppression capabilities is, is all that would be needed for that. That's all I have.
All right. And your thoughts on the perpetual run of this CUP?
I'm totally fine with that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings. I agree with making a suggestion for additional fire suppression considerations. We're not allowed to use chainsaws on the forest much of the year because of sparks, so I'm not sure that an off-road vehicle won't also have some potential risk there. On another tangent, I want to go back to Commissioner Tohe's concerns about respecting the land and the first peoples that were here way before us and are still here. And I don't work for FUSD and I wouldn't propose to tell them how to do their education, but I just think that this camp needs to also include the information that this is on stolen indigenous lands and we need to respect it as such. But I can make the findings. Thank you.
Thank you. And how do you feel about the perpetual condition?
I feel fine. I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
Okay, I am in support of what both Commissioner Best and Commissioner Wilson proposed. I think sometimes good intentions, when you express it the way I see number seven right now, doesn't always work. The other thing I'd point out with an OHV and a tank on the OHV or on a trailer, the one thing that you're looking for is mobility. And mobility that has to be responsive time-wise. You got to be able to do it quickly. So in that respect, I think it is a valid concern, and I think that it is a very worthwhile condition to require, as both Commissioners Best and Wilson have suggested. Beyond that, the perpetual CUP, I think, given the constraints that go with the land, I think that is appropriate in this case. The other thing that you have to think about is there are also requirements that are performance requirements that go with the use per the zoning code. That has to be considered also. And in that case, again, it supports the perpetual CUP. Let's see, the last thing. Yes. Other than a potential Condition Seven, I can make the findings for this. So at that point, I think I've said enough.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Just so I'm clear on, when you say Condition Seven, you're talking about the one that Bob just wrote in that is actually numbered number seven and then striking number eight?
Well, actually, as both Commissioner Best and Wilson first proposed, which would be eight, the way it is shown here. I was looking at it, I was thinking more about what I was speaking to rather than what was up there on the screen right now. So I would be in support of Condition Eight as it is shown.
Okay. And we, and striking number seven?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Commissioner, oh, and Commissioner Ruggles, was that all?
Yes, that's a helper now.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Best. I think number eight is something that, as currently is displayed, is something that is critical to the success of this project. It doesn't take an expert to know that a vehicle that can get a significant amount of water to a relatively small fire very quickly and put that out is, is what we really need in this kind of an environment. And while I respect the heck out of everything that's done up there, we got to also recognize, these are kids and they do things that kids do. I was guilty. Somebody's going to be smoking outside of a tent or a dorm someplace. Somebody's going to be doing something that, that we would like not to happen, but will happen. And we have to be prepared for that. And knowing that the, the professional response from Summit is that far away, I don't believe we have an alternative to what is currently listed as number eight. To Commissioner Williams' concern about off-road vehicles, the, the, the majority of them, if not all of them now, are equipped with spark arresting mufflers so that there isn't a risk of a fire being created by that off-road vehicle. And the risk of that would certainly be far less than the existing fire that they would already be going to, to try to get under control or to reduce its, its significance. I would like to maybe consider, because we all know that, and unfortunately this week, we were shown once again, things like cellular communication are subject to interruptions. I would like to encourage that they have a two-way radio that is monitoring the fire safety frequencies. If not, not just monitoring, but also being able to communicate with the, the fire district around that area so that should an evacuation become necessary, they would be alerted as quickly as everyone else and wouldn't be dependent upon a cellular signal that may or may not exist at that particular time. And I completely support the idea of this CUP continuing in perpetuity. Validity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. While we're at Commission Discussion, we're going to discuss. So I'm going to ask you, Commissioner Wilson first, and then Commissioner Ruggles, I'm going to ask you the same question. Commissioner Wilson first. I would like, I would like to know how you would respond to Ms. Wilder's comment when I said, how do you feel about adding the ATV with a 200-gallon tank and firefighting equipment? And we all heard her response, which is, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. I, I'm in the, the learning process, and if that's the best way, I'm all for it. But is that in fact the best use of resources? Now, the reason that I'm asking this question is because are we, is anyone on here that we're talking, like, we're all talking? I am not a firefighting expert. Are any of us experts, or should we leave the next level to the experts? Okay, so that, I want you to respond to that first, Commissioner Wilson, and then Commissioner Ruggles. I want to know what, what your thoughts are because I'm struggling with this condition.
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. I would respond that all we need to do is look to Smokey the Bear, who tells us that we need significant quantities of water to make sure that our, our campfire is out. That same thing applies, whether it's a campfire or an unintended forest That same thing applies whether it's a campfire or an unintended forest fire that's getting ready to destroy what's left of our, our forest on our mountain. And you know, water is the easiest, most effective immediate response to that type of an event possible. And I, I don't know that we need to specify how many gallons, but a, a, as recommended by the fire chief, ATV with a trailer that has a tank and a pump capable of, you know, putting significant water on a, you know, a potential fire, or a, a fire is, I, I think a completely reasonable expectation here. And not just for the safety of our mountain, but as Commissioner Best has pointed out, for, for the safety of, of the campers there themselves.
Okay. Okay, um, does that complete your answer?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Ruggles, could you, could you answer the same question? Like I said, I'm, I'm struggling on this condition.
Well, uh, yes, I think so. I, I am in agreement with Commissioner Wilson on this. And one of the reasons is, from my observations during the tunnel fire where I live and also where Commissioner Wilson lives. And what occurred on a somewhat larger scale, but it's the same idea. We had some people who volunteered their water trucks in this neighborhood. And the thing that they could do is, where the terrain allowed, get to areas where ground fire was, it was very plainly going to develop via ladder fuels into a much more severe fire. They simply drove right across any number of properties up here spraying water. And that brought it to a halt in a number of areas, probably saved several homes up here. And on a smaller scale, at somewhere like Camp Colton with the, an OHV, whether the tank is mounted on a trailer or the OHV itself, the ability to get there with water. And just like Commissioner Wilson said, you ask Smokey the Bear and it's a matter of getting the water there and how much of it you can utilize all at once, I think makes that mandatory, really. So that's pretty much it as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support seven and eight. We're giving the applicant wiggle room based on advice from experts, but we're not experts, but we can add one and one and get two. And we have certainly seen enough fires to know what happens and how fast it can happen on those special days. So, you know, if the fire chief, maybe the fire chief will want to put a truck up there all summer, who knows? I'm surprised Commissioner Williams hasn't suggested horses because they wouldn't make sparks, but maybe that's not practical either. I, I think those two together show our concern based on common sense and give the applicant and the experts advising the applicant flexibility. So I think the two together stand. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Best, the, the two together, if you look at eight, um, it is a standalone. Like, in other words, it doesn't matter what the fire chief says.
No, it's, it says more similar equipment approved by the fire chief.
Okay, the applicant shall provide an off-highway vehicle onsite equipped for fighting fires with a tank and pump, similar. Okay, alrighty.
And, and I'm sure if the fire chief comes up with some completely different idea, that we would all say, aha, you're the expert and you're right, that nobody's going to argue with them. But I, I don't, I don't think that's going to happen, but, you know. As long as it's, as, as long as it's better. I, I don't have my ego involved here. I just, you know, we, we've all been here a while. We've seen what happens. We know that getting water on a fire in the first few minutes can make the difference between literally life and death. So I think it's worth it. I just, I just leave them alone and let the applicant and the, and the experts work out the best system. We're not going to be up there nitpicking.
Right. Okay, um, thank you for that, Commissioner Best. And I know that all of us as commissioners, our, um, I do know that our intent and our motive is the same, which is to prevent a disastrous fire. So, um, Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is raised. And you're muted.
I apologize for that. What I would like to say is that I think Commissioner Best has pointed out the fact that with seven and eight, and especially the way eight is written, that this adds the flexibility for the applicant that is needed. Because working with the, the fire chief, whether it is Flagstaff Fire, well, that would be Flagstaff Fire in the case with Summit, because it's a joint effort. It's a joint administrative, administration that it gives the experts the ability to say, well, in our estimation, that, that may not be necessary. And in a case like that, it would still meet the requirements of both seven and eight. So I would be in favor of leaving the two in as written. Because I think that will cover the basis. It'll take a little bit of work on the part of the applicant, but that way I, I think it would defer a decision on that to quote the experts. And I certainly stand behind Summit Fire on that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Vice Chair Burton?
Um, I, I don't like the use of approved by the fire chief because it is the school district. I think it should just be, the, gosh, I lost my train of thought.
Fire marshal?
Fire authority, like the applicable, the applicable fire authority. Something along those lines.
Meaning the applicable fire authority for, that oversees fire prevention in schools?
Yeah, whoever, whoever's responsible for overseeing, I think she said it was the marshal. I, but whoever's responsible for overseeing it, since it is a school district, it, it should be, obviously, it's at their discretion, not, not ours.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I comment on this?
Yes, you can.
Madam Chair, it is, it is very typical, and also Vice Chair Burton, it is very typical that we do refer to the fire chief. In this case, Summit Fire would be responding to fires and these are the experts on fire, you know, on, on fire prevention, of course. So this, this is a very common thing that we typically put in conditions because we are referring to who's going to actually come and fight the fire, right? Who's working with the applicant to make sure fire prevention is taking place on the site? So that, that is pretty common.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Short. I'm going to go to Commissioner Best now.
Actually, I am an expert. I forgot. When I was 16 years old, I was a member of the Providence Volunteer Fire Company. And in the middle of the night, you would hear this siren would go off and heck, it was a half a mile away. And you would leap out of bed and jump on the truck and thought about that in years. My point being that another idea might be to have a bell. It could even be a hand-beaten bell, just in case electricity went out. And that bell meant everybody report to the parking lot or everybody, you know, it's an emergency, everybody do whatever the emergency plan is right now, without question. And it could be heard, you know, half a mile away, bring in all the groups. And might make it, it might be easier than trying to keep track of, you know, a dozen handheld radios. So there are lots of ideas like this that the fire chief could probably come up with, but that's what I thought I'd throw in. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And those, that I believe would go to the fire chief. Which is what you just suggested, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Wilson, your hand is up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would suggest the fire chief is not the right person at all in this case. The National Forest Service is what surrounds this camp. They're the experts at putting out forest fires. The fire chief is much more focused on structural and, 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 you know, urban-type fires. So we, we obviously, I, I, it appears that we all agree there is some additional level of, of support needed. You know, it may be the water tank on people's back with a hand pump. I don't know what those are called, but something more than shovels and buckets is necessary for the safety of both the campers and, and our natural environment. So I, I don't know how we phrase number eight. I think it's an important thing to have included in there. But fire chief is not the right answer. Thank you.
Um, okay, so how does this commission determine? And I'm, this commission is going, excuse me, this question is directed to staff and commissioners. How do we determine the appropriate legal fire authority that should be the overall say-so for this? Because that seems to be the real question. Is it the fire chief? Is it the fire marshal? Or is it the National Forest Service? Who can answer that question?
Madam Chair, this is just with staff. So if, if a property is in a fire district, then the fire, the fire chief for that district does have, typically under the zoning ordinance for land use decisions, has been, has been given the authority to make decisions on what's necessary as they are responsible for that district. I believe, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong here, this is not technically within the boundaries of a, of a fire district. Therefore, they have their fire and emergency response plans, the six-page, six-page plan in, in the packet and is approved by, by Summit. So I, and, but I hear Commissioner Wilson as well in wanting Forest Service input on this solution. But yeah, the, the zoning ordinance in order to state statute specifically state who has an authority. I mean, I think we would have to go to the state fire marshal and delegation of authority to fire districts when, when districts are created. And of course, every district is different. They have their own board, they make their own choices. So for, for our purposes, for land use decisions, it has been whoever is the, is the fire chief for, for the district, if it's in the district, or whoever, whatever fire chief is assuming responsibility for fire and emergency services.
Okay, and because this is, because Summit Fire is accepting responsibility for fire services, that is what makes the fire chief the appropriate individual to be the one that says yay or nay on moving forward with this.
That's, that would be the way we would see it. Yes, ma'am, sure.
Okay, um, I see the, um, the applicant, the applicant's hand is raised and I will tell you that because we are in discussion. Ms. Wilder, I'm going to be a little out of order here because we are at commission discussion. So normally, I do not allow anyone except commissioners to participate in this discussion. But because I feel you may have something very relevant, I would like to know what your thoughts are, please.
Thank you. I knew I was out of order, but you could have always ignored me. So I believe that the correct jurisdiction for this is the state fire marshal. That is who comes up to camp every year and tells us these pine needles need to be right, this tree needs to be taken down, this, the way that you're storing these is not correct. So I really think, and that's who all these plans will go to. So I really think they're the correct, correct jurisdiction. However, I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Wilson that we need to talk to wildfire experts who understand the direction and the type of fire that we could anticipate starting out there, that know about the grasses and the trees and what, what's surrounding the site and can help us come up with the best possible plan.
Okay, so then you feel adding fire marshal and National Forest Service would be appropriate?
Or approved by the fire marshal. The National Forest Service is not going to approve anything, but I think it should say in consultation with the National Forest Service.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. So thank you, Ms. Wilder. We're going to, I'm going to end your comments there. And, um, we're going to go ahead and continue this at discussion, at commission discussion. Okay, so I think that all of the commissioners are in agreement that seven and eight are appropriate. And, you know, I had forgotten about, I had actually forgotten about a personal story. This actually happened, made the front page of the Williams Grand Canyon News, I believe it was in 2018. And as many of you know, I do have a water hauling business. And one of my drivers was making a delivery one day and was just down there getting ready to deliver water and happened to kind of glance out and saw some smoke coming out of a, a, a structure. And he thought, ah, I bet there, I don't know, smoking something in there, you know? And he kept looking and he thought, no, there is an actual fire starting. Kind of sounded the alarm, hooked up the hose, hooked up the pump and put this fire out. It was adjacent to Forest Service property. And after the dust settled and the smoke settled, it was later determined that had that fire, had the water not been there with the pump, with the, and the ability to, to spray it, it probably could have turned into a very devastating situation. I tell that story because I understand the importance of water on scene, which I suppose goes back to Commissioner Wilson's comments about it's just Smokey the Bear. And so I, I do not have a problem now with number eight. Like setting out, the applicant shall provide an off-highway vehicle onsite equipped for firefighting fighters with a tank and pump. But I do like the fact that, or similar equipment approved by the fire, fire marshal. I don't know if the fire marshal is going to consult with the National Forest Service. I, I'm going to, I'm, I, this is my concern, is that we're kind of convoluted something here. I also have other businesses where I do happen to know that the fire marshal is the one that gives the ultimate yay or nay. And I honestly think that we need to end. I think we need to, this is my opinion, we're going to go back and talk. If somebody, if somebody disagrees, I want to hear it. But in my opinion, I think we should put a period after the word marshal and number eight, strike the rest of it. And I think the reason I say that is, is because consultation with National Forest Service, if we want them to do that, I think that just needs to be included in number seven. The applicant shall work with the fire chief and the National Forest Service to provide additional measures for fire prevention. That is where I feel that belongs at. So, uh, we're going to run back through this. Commissioner Wilson, I see your hand.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that the applicant should provide, or shall provide an off-highway vehicle onsite equipped for fighting fires with a tank and pump or similar equipment. Or, well, no, the applicant shall shall consult with the National Forest Service and provide an off-highway vehicle equipped to fight fires or similar equipment as And provide an off-highway vehicle equipped to fight fires or similar equipment as approved by the fire marshal. So we can, we can integrate it into one single, single thing that keeps it simple. So the applicant shall consult with. And provide. Or consult with the National Forest Service. Right, onsite. As approved by the state fire marshal.
Okay, so number eight, the applicant shall consult with the National Forest Service. And provide an off-highway vehicle onsite equipped for fighting fires with a tank and pump. Or similar equipment approved by the fire marshal.
Yep.
Okay.
As approved.
Sure.
Need to add as in there.
Similar equipment, as approved, right, put that, yes, okay. All right.
And are we specifying, I caught, uh, just trying to assist here, um, are we specifying the state fire marshal?
Yes.
Should, yes.
Uh huh.
As Ms. Wilder asked.
Okay, I want all of the commissioners to read condition number seven. As it has been written, I'm going to read it for the record. The applicant can, shall can, excuse me, the applicant shall consult with the National Forest Service. And provide an off-highway vehicle onsite equipped for fighting fires with a tank and pump or similar equipment. As approved by the state fire marshal. If any commissioner is not okay with that condition, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I think that we have uh, reached a consensus here and we are ready to move forward with a motion and a second. Commissioner Wilson?
Madam Chair, the other thing I, that I had suggested is adding that. There be a radio to monitor the, the fire safety frequencies as a backup form of communication. And um, more timely form. I, I would love to see that added as a condition. If there's support by the rest of the commission, thank you.
Okay, I, I personally have no problem with adding that. And. The reason that I don't is, is because we just saw the AT&amp;T cell phone failure. Like this is happening in real time. I can't imagine that radios, the kind that Commissioner Wilson is describing are an expensive investment. Commissioner Wilson, correct me if I'm wrong, please.
No ma'am, you're correct.
Okay, all right. Please read that uh, wording so Mr. Short can type it in.
Uh, the applicant shall maintain a two-way radio capable of communicating with local fire safety frequencies. And that should be enough.
Okay, let's look at it written out there.
Repeat that last part, so I have a slow time.
Communications for local fire safety frequencies.
Okay, I'm going to read it. This is Chair Antiveris. I'm going to read this uh, condition number eight for the record. The applicant shall maintain a two-way radio capable of maintaining communication with local fire frequencies. I'm going to ask if any commissioner uh, is not in favor of adding that commission, condition, to please raise your hand. Seeing none, I think that we now have a set of conditions that all commissioners are comfortable approving. If I'm right, I will accept a motion and a second, please.
Madam Chair, would love to uh, make a motion to approve CUP 24 TAC 002 as amended in tonight's meeting.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to approve CUP 24 002 and a second by Commissioner Ruggles. With modifications as stated. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Williams? Aye. Commissioner Tohe?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Uh, this is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. Um, I think that there can be no doubt that this commission takes fire safety and human safety very seriously. Uh, after this good conver, good discussion this evening. The last item on the agenda this evening is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. I'm going to ask if there's anyone who wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda. If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, my clock shows 7:31 PM and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.